Testing meeting audio, one, two, three. Okay, so we have the audio now. I apologize for the interruption. Please proceed.
No, no worries. So was the audio out for our full introduction? Because I'm okay with having our favorite.
It was. I noticed it right before, right after we finished the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, so why don't we just take it from the top since it'll only take a second? Ms. Cavallaro, because there are folks that are only listening. Do you think you could reestablish our quorum for us? An apologies, folks, it's 5:33 PM and we had an audio glitch. And so for folks that are listening in, we're just gonna repeat.
President Householder.
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis. Trustee Hack.
I'm still here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. And then, Trustee Hernandez, do you think you can lay this in the flag slot again?
Absolutely. All right, right hand over your chest. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And tonight, this evening, we only have one item on our agenda and it's a closed session item. However, I anticipate we have some public comments for that. So Superintendent Anello, do we have public comments for this closed session item?
Yes, we do. This will be read by Directors Lindsay Wisely and Director Amy Betancourt.
Wonderful. And do we have an estimate of how many comments there are, or at least pages? Because I know we just typically print out pages.
I don't. Kelly, do you have that?
It's approximately 100 pages. A lot of the comments are on the short side, but there are a couple of long ones as well that may exceed the three-minute limit.
Okay, I, hold on, let me do that math really quick. Okay, well. That's gonna be well over three hours if they all went to three minutes. And so why don't we limit the time to two minutes on the clock? That way it'll be, you know, roughly, you know, a little less time.
Madam Chair, I think that they've invited themselves to send in their messages. I think they should be heard. We've always been a three-minute item.
Thank you for your comment, Trustee Rocha. All right, so two minutes? And then I'm not sure who's taking it off first, if it's Ms. Betancourt or Ms. Wisely.
You asked to do two minutes, Mary said three minutes. I agree with Mary. Then you went back to two minutes, ignoring what the two board members had said to you. I think we need to do what we always have done, three minutes.
Thank you for your comment, Trustee Hack. So it's gonna be two minutes, so I'm not sure who's going first.
What authority do you have to change it?
Trustee Hack, you're not recognized. I'm reducing the time to two minutes so that we have a more efficient meeting. We have over roughly 100 comments, so that will be about 300 minutes. Now it'll be 200 minutes, so I am the board.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Recognize, Trustee Rocha, two minutes on the clock, moving on.
No, three minutes, Ms. Madam Chair. We have kept three minutes. We want three minutes. Sorry, everybody has a right to be heard.
Trustee Rocha, you're not recognized. Trustee Hernandez.
You never recognize me.
I think I'm in, I'm in support of lowering the time because I think, you know, this is a board meeting for us. And, you know, I do want to hear everyone's comments, but, you know, we can't just get filibustered into being here all night and not being able to get work done. And I think the main point that stands is that we can't really, you know, overrule a chair without a majority board opinion.
Superintendent Anello?
Yes, I'm just wondering if it was your employment, if you would want public comment limited, just some food for thought.
Sorry, I, there was two people talking. Say that one more time.
I just wondered if it was your employment, if you would support limiting public comment. I don't think this is run-of-the-mill.
Thank you for your comment, Superintendent Anello. So we're gonna do two minutes.
You requested a motion?
I'm not requesting anything. I'm saying it's gonna be two minutes because I'm the board president and I have to make sure that these meetings are efficient.
Wow, you're being a bully.
Okay, Trustee.
You have a unilateral authority.
Trustee Hack, you're not recognized. So, two minutes on the clock. If, if we want to read through the public comments in full on our own, we have that right and so does the public. So we're gonna do two minutes. We have our attorney on the line. I want to respect their time as well and as well as everybody who is listening right now. So we're gonna do two minutes.
This is the Blue Cell servant.
Okay, Trustee Hack. I'm trying to be very kind right now, but we're gonna be moving on. So, two minutes on the clock, not sure who starts.
I will start. Jessica Kelb, staff. I will keep this brief. I 100% support Stephanie Anello as our superintendent. She has been the best thing to happen to our district in the 13 years that I have taught here. Thank you. Katrina Deanda, staff. In the 20 years that I have been a teacher, Stephanie Anello is absolutely the best superintendent I have ever had the pleasure to work with. I urge board members, do not let the petty grudge of a law-breaking school board president cloud the reality that Stephanie Anello is an asset to our district and should remain as our superintendent. Crystal, community member. Householder, you're an immature child playing games with our kids. This item is only on the agenda because your removal is on the agenda for Wednesday. Name not provided, staff. I do not agree with the dismissal of Superintendent Anello. This special meeting felt sneaky and underhanded. I am very disturbed by a few members of the board's behavior, especially the president. Our school board is looking like a reality TV show. This is absolutely ridiculous and embarrassing. Ms. President, stop making our district look bad and our jobs harder. Name not provided, community member. Ellie is playing petty political games, her words in parentheses, to schedule this meeting. Superintendent Anello is the best superintendent we have had in quite some time. And for a stupid vendetta against her to try and get her out of here before the next board meeting, which by the way is tomorrow, and at that meeting we'll be discussing Ellie's removal, is absurd. I'm calling for you, Ms. Householder, to publicly resign and apologize for your hurtful rhetoric. Clyde, I need to know what it is going to take besides 75% of people asking for the removal of the school board president. Antonio, I have no faith in you because of the way you have voted in the past with Householder. Name not provided, community member. I don't believe Stephanie Anello should be dismissed. You, Ellie, seem to have a vendetta against her because she won't succumb to your ridiculous claims. Use data that is recent, not years ago. You are using data from an area where the kids run the city. Until we get control over the kids who are ruining our city, the school system is going to suffer for it. Teachers can't teach, authority can't gain control because if they try, you, my dear, run to social media and make it a racial issue. Let's get control over an unruly city before we try to replace someone doing the best she can with the circumstance she has been dealt. As far as you are concerned, due to your public outcry and stirring the pot, yes, you should be removed because every action has a consequence, something the kids of this community need to learn. They won't ever learn that with elected officials that make excuses for them day after day. Name not provided, staff. Dear AUSD Board Members, I am a new teacher in this district and was thrilled to begin this job in my teaching career. However, the actions that have been taken by President Householder in the last few weeks have been appalling. It is clear to me that these decisions and actions were not made with the best interest of students and staff in mind, but to further a personal agenda. President Householder, you are a public servant. You are supposed to be working toward the enrichment of the education of Antioch students. By attacking Superintendent Anello and Antioch teachers, you are doing the opposite. It is clear that you do not care about this community or its children. You are acting selfishly. Our children and teachers deserve better. It is not Superintendent Anello who needs to go, it is you. Adam Bunch, community member. Antioch School Board. Trustee Ellie Householder is holding this Brown Act violating meeting for only one reason, a desperate and quite frankly frightening attempt to retain through her own fragile mental state a hold on Antioch School District. Every parent, employee, student, and alumni are rightfully disturbed by Ms. Householder's actions. Our superintendent must continue and Ellie must be removed for the safety of everyone in the Antioch Unified School District. Name not provided, staff. Ellie, as responsibility is taught in our schools, we teach our students that they need to do what they should do when they should do it. The representation of your office has become a true embarrassment to our community, district, and citywide with you in it. The schoolyard behavior that you bait others to take part in needs to stop. Yes, our numbers are down. Have you considered the pandemic having an effect on that? We are not the lone district in this scenario. With Stephanie Anello at the helm, we have been able to reopen schools, serve those that need virtual schools, and reestablish connection for student learning. Firsthand, I have seen current success. Give it a rest, Ellie. You should just face facts and remove yourself from office as it is believed by many that you have lost sight of what matters. We don't need a board president that stirs the pot. We need a leader who believes in cohesion, not continuous segregation. Thank you. Name not provided, staff. Dear Board Members, I encourage you to spend a day with the teachers and students in our schools. Watch the successes that we have each day in the classroom and the things that impact our job negatively. Our board president, who is not an educator, wants to make a decision that is impulsive and harsh. Ellie Householder, if you want to improve our schools, provide educators and students with the support they need. Invest in our programs and materials, support staff development, work towards hiring more site safety workers and substitutes so that high school teachers can use their prep periods. Because I can assure you that removing Stephanie Anello from her role will not be a magic solution to the problems in our district. Name not provided, staff. Hello, School Board and Superintendent. I'm writing to show my support for Superintendent Anello. This board is being run into the ground by President Householder. She obviously thinks that her opinion is superior to that of the hundreds of comments that have been sent in by staff, parents, and community during the last two board meetings. You are elected officials. You were elected but must continue to listen to the people. Did you just pretend to be what we wanted you to be so you could get elected and then turn around and tell all of his parents, community, and staff how it should be according to you? This is very embarrassing for our school district. Superintendent Anello has been in the trenches with us issuing laptops and lending a hand to whichever school site needs it. Ms. Anello actually comes to visit our campuses. I have never seen Ms. Householder at any of the campuses. Let's go back to focusing on schools. Scott Allen, staff. Being a student of the AUSD and working it for the last 25 years, I can say I have seen some crazy things. Unfortunately, this topic may have jumped to number one. For a board that seems much more interested in social justice rather than education is difficult to understand. We should be here for children, as Stephanie Anello is, and not for our own personal agendas. I ask that you think about the harm you are causing and start working together to support our children. Catherine M., staff. I am beyond disappointed as to how our school board leaders have conducted business in the last few months. Our board and our superintendent should be working together to support staff and students. This has turned into a political circus with Ellie Householder as the ringmaster. Ellie needs to put her political agenda away and save that crap for the city council. Stephanie Anello continues to support the staff and students of AUSD. Let her do her job. Leslie Scudero, staff. Ellie, you write as if you have expertise. Come to DRMS for an entire day or any other campus and see what goes on. We are coming out of the only deadly pandemic of our lifetime. All student scores are sluggish, not just AUSD. We are the staff who cares immensely about our students. We are looking at the whole person and we are worried about what they have been through. Students are acting out for reasons that have nothing to do with their academics. Until we get this under control, scores will falter. This is not the fault of Ms. Anello. Our three unions support and respect her work. However, it is you who have no confidence, we have no confidence in. Stop playing games and bring an embarrassment to our community. Will, community member. Householder has lost her mind. Name not provided, community member. Fake transparency of Householder fails to even say what she wants, but we can all read between the lines that she has wanted to get rid of Anello for some time. Hey Ellie, instead of using three-year-old data, maybe you should see the new results before trying to pretend like you care. You are a child and should be removed from all positions you hold. Name not provided, community member. Perhaps if Ms. Householder focused on supporting the superintendent and staff rather than constantly creating uncertainty, mistrust, and dysfunction, she could make a difference. Her participation in Antioch School and City Affairs is very concerning. I don't see a person leading at a very crucial time. I see a self-serving disruptor that could take an already struggling city and make it worse. Frankly, if I had any desire to get into politics locally, I would be deterred because of her. We need more practical, even-headed folks to lead, not performance artists pretending to be doing something. Name not provided, community member. They are making a mockery of themselves. They've all lost the best interests of students because they are all too busy pushing their own personal agendas. Need to get rid of everyone and start with a clean slate. Our board is a joke and no one is laughing. Name withheld, community member. Ellie, we see through you. The district is lucky to have Stephanie Anello. You just don't like her because unlike the other two minions on the board who are apparently scared of you, she cuts through your nonsense. Worse, the community sees through this and hopefully you will be recalled. You are in direct violation of FERPA law. Frankly, your blatant egoism and need for power is abundantly clear. Instead of Ms. Anello resigning, it should be you. Nicole, community member. This is just freaking wrong. Ms. Anello has been the best thing to happen in Antioch since my kids started here 10 years ago. Name not provided, staff. Stephanie is one of the best superintendents we have ever had. She has always supported all the staff and students. Jake, community member. Did Stephanie win Superintendent of the Year last year? So why is this even a thought? Oh, that's right, she doesn't bow down to Householder's tantrums. You are a freaking baby who is trying to be the bully and lie be, and lie be become the victim. Fred, community member. What a joke. I'm gonna call my special meeting to remove you before your meeting to remove me. This is so immature. Householder just continues to prove herself fully incapable of this job. Michael, community member. Householder has turned this into a clown show. Robin, community member. So when will all this nonsense stop and we actually begin to focus on the children of the district? Stephanie Anello has had the kids' best interests at heart, especially through the pandemic. This is embarrassing. Get back to focusing on the kids. Ann Johnson, community member. How immature can Ellie really be? Misuse of power. She needs to go. Samantha Franceschi, Franceschi, staff. I feel that the decision to remove Superintendent Anello is very rash, unethical, and called for and immature. In my personal opinion, Ellie Householder is using these last moments possibly she has as president to abuse any power that she can try to hold on to. In her statement regarding the special meeting, she quoted data from the 2018-19 school year. And what employment setting is it moral or ethical to evaluate someone on data from two to three years ago? I know that if I were going to get evaluated on my work as a teacher, I would want relevant and current data, especially if my job were on the line. As a teacher, I have looked at Superintendent Anello as a pillar in the community who has a tough job on a regular basis. She has successfully navigated our district through one of the most difficult time periods in recent history and continues to do so. Alan, community member. Ellie gets caught lying on camera and has done nothing but blame, in parentheses, on CBS, the superintendent. I'm not an attorney by any means, but this sounds like a hostile work environment lawsuit. The board needs to stop this before Ellie costs the district some serious money. Lisa Kennedy, staff. I am once again writing in support of Stephanie Anello. Ms. Anello is far and away the best superintendent AUSD has had in my 20-plus years as a teacher here. She has an overwhelmingly high amount of support from AUSD staff, as already known from the comments, emails, and signed petitions from the last last-minute special board meeting. I will continue to write in support of Ms. Anello for each future last-minute special board meeting as well, as long as is needed. Thank you, Ms. Anello, for all that you do. Robert Bruce, community member. As I commented on your board meeting on September 8th, there was a rule violation in your meeting of December 2020 when you thought you had elected a president. The person that made the motion was out of order and the net result is that your board doesn't have a president. All of your meetings since then have been in violation of your rules. This includes this meeting that you are having. To further compound issues in your September 8th meeting, a motion was made and seconded, and then Ellie asked for a roll call vote without any discussion. This is a direct violation of Robert's Rules of Order. There is a procedure that must be followed. By law, the school board has to have adopted Robert's Rules of Order and placed in their bylaws and must follow it. The board has done that, correct? The person that needs to be removed is Ms. Householder, not your superintendent. Jenna Wessenhagen, staff. Good evening, trustees. This is an absurd special meeting regarding Superintendent Anello. Without a doubt, this is the most childish thing to date Ellie Householder has done, and the list is quite long. Ellie is up for removal on Wednesday, yet a day before the same board of trustees will vote on that, she wants to try and remove Superintendent Anello? This is a vindictive game that Ms. Householder is playing. Nothing more, nothing less. Ms. Anello cares about this district, the students, the employees, and the community. Where has Ms. Householder been? I recall Ms. Anello working to pass out laptops for district learning with other staff. Householder was nowhere to be found. Ms. Householder claims to care about the students. Her actions since being elected have proven otherwise. She loves to quote statistics. Where are the statistics of Householder participating or even showing her accomplishments? All she does is produce divisive, produce divisive words, not actually benefits through action for students or the district. Ms. Anello has worked with her team to ensure the best possible outcome of the district through a pandemic. Our attendance has improved, our grades are improving, and I believe testing will show an improvement. Morale has also gone up. All while, Householder has worked to undermine Ms. Anello and district staff. I would encourage Ms. Householder to stop the games and political payback. Ms. Anello is not the problem. Ms. Householder is, and the board should recognize this. If anyone should be disciplined here, it is Ms. Householder and the removal of her as board president, or at the very least, censured for the second time. Nikki Dinner, staff. I will try to state this as politely as I can. This is a farce, an absolute farce. To hold a meeting to terminate a superintendent who has been nothing but beneficial to our district just for your hurt pride is laughable. Ellie can try whatever power grab she'd like. She has only proven she'll never gain the respect of those she claims to serve. Name not provided, staff. Ellie, does there come a point when your focus as board president is ever about the students and not your personal agenda or saving your own self? In your time as president, you have never brought up issues for the benefit of students. It is also clear you do not know how to run a board meeting or follow the laws of the Brown Act. Your special meeting, that is only listed as public employee dismissal, almost sounds like a threat or ultimatum, as if now you're really mad so going after those who attempt to hold you accountable. Being on the board is not all about you, Ellie. It's about the students, staff, and community members you are supposed to represent. Grow up, step aside, and take your political agenda to elsewhere. The role of board president is to be coveted and respected, not used for your personal lobby interests. Name not provided, community member. The superintendent is one of the few actually doing their job. She must not be removed. The real, the real issue will be removed in Wednesday's meeting. Name not provided, staff. I am writing to voice my disagreement with the dismissal of Stephanie Anello as superintendent and deep concern about the state of our entire AUSD Board of Education. This attempt to remove Ms. Anello as superintendent seems like a personal vendetta thinly veiled as responsibility to serve the students, end quotes. Dr. Lewis and Mr. Hernandez, if you vote to remove Ms. Anello simply because she is unpopular with one other board member, you are doing exactly what you said you would not do at the last board meeting when you voted against removing Ms. Householder as board president, quotes, simply because she is unpopular, end quotes. If you were all truly trying to best serve the students in our district, you would stop wasting everyone's time trying to get each other removed and start actually working to better our district by putting programs and plans in place to make it better. Stop pointing the finger at people and start actually taking some productive actions to make things better together. The board needs to learn to get along if they're ever going to actually, quote, serve the students. We have all worked with people we do not like, but we have handled it like adults and figured out how to deal with it rather than trying to get people fired or removed. Honestly, the entire board should be ashamed of themselves for either creating this toxic environment and acting like children, or supporting other board members who are acting like children. This entire meeting is a curlish waste of time and resources. AUSD Board, do better. Name not provided, community member. Stephanie Anello is an exceptional superintendent for AUSD and has done a wonderful job making the students her top priority, all while having to put up with the politics of this school board. Ms. Householder has a vendetta against Ms. Anello, and the rest of the school board needs to step up and make this stop. Ms. Householder is out of control and the focus needs to be returned to improving the school district and helping our kids, not promoting numerous agendas and vendettas as Householder. If Ms. Householder is seeking the removal of Ms. Anello, this needs a no vote by the rest of the board. Teresa Elser, community member. This is another example of wasted time and taxpayer money. Ellie Householder is after Stephanie Anello in hopes of saving herself. I can't believe this leadership. It's just a joke. You, Ellie Householder, are the one that needs to go. Anello has been a far more superior leader and has done her job to the letter. Can't say that about Householder. Householder has abused this position and crossed lines both ethically and hopefully soon to be proven legally. I have lived in Antioch for over 21 years, had a business in Antioch for 26 years, but no more. My family and my business contributed to our boys' school since kindergarten and still do. We have two more years left and can't wait to exit as soon as possible. Name not provided, staff. Board President and Householder, I have worked for Antioch Unified for nearly 15 years and have never submitted public comments before. But I'm appalled that the board's oversight of our district has devolved into this embarrassment tonight. Do you really think a closed session solely for the purpose of discipline, dismissal, or release of a public employee fools anyone? I have absolutely no confidence in your ability to serve as president of this board of trustees and cast my vote as such within my union this weekend. I'm sure there are many other classified employees who did the same. Whether that small act of democracy makes a future board agenda is highly doubtful, given that you're trying to save yourself by eliminating our superintendent first. How Superintendent Anello has managed to do her job under the impossible circumstances of the last 18 months is beyond me. She's been hampered every step of the way by you and those who follow you, not to mention a global pandemic, but still, she succeeded with grace and dignity. Do you have any idea how difficult it is to open a school as large as Antioch High with over 1,900 students in a normal year, much less this one? Of course you don't, because you never set foot on our campus. But try to imagine and then multiply that by 25, 24 schools across the district. We've all done it, even while COVID continues to spread, overwhelming us with country regulations and contract chasing. We've done it while negativity and hate on social media. We've done it while negativity and hate on social media tears at the bonds that hold our students' communities together. We've done it even while you and your followers set yourselves up as the worst possible role models for young people eager for positive change and people to believe in. You're right about one thing: it is political. COVID runs rampant, the state's on fire, and you fiddle while it burns down around you. Superintendent Stephanie Anello has my unqualified support. You and your political minions do not. December can't come fast enough. Name Not Provided, Staff. I fully support Stephanie Anello as an effective, hardworking, and fair superintendent. There is absolutely no reason for her removal, and it would cause negative repercussions throughout our district. Do what's best for AUSD. Ask the teachers. We want our superintendent to stay. Name Not Provided, Staff. I am incredibly saddened and frustrated that once again we are at a special board meeting for this issue. If Antioch's best interest was really the focal point, we would try to find a way to work together. How is three-year-old data relevant after the past 18 months of unprecedented turmoil? Please stop wasting our time with these meetings that go on for way too long, because we, staff, and community members feel compelled to put in comments that support our superintendent. Please actually listen to not just the quantity of support for Superintendent Anello, but the content as well. I truly hope that the overwhelming voice of the community is heard, and that these petty squabbles can be set aside so that all of Antioch can work together and solve problems that we are facing. Thank you. Name Not Provided, Community Member. The attempted removal of Superintendent Anello is a clear abuse of power by an incompetent and immature school board president. Householder is only calling the special meeting because of the repeated attempts to properly add to the regular board meeting an agenda item that calls for her removal as board president. Calling a special meeting with just over 24-hour notice and only about four hours for public comments is a childish use of her position. The trustees need to take note of the immature acts of this board president and do the right thing, do the right thing and keep Superintendent Anello and remove Householder tomorrow. If Householder had any honor and actually wanted to put the students of AUSD first, she would resign effective immediately. Please stop the insanity and bring proper order and leadership back to AUSD. Remove Householder immediately. Name Not Provided, Staff. I am so disgusted by the calling of this meeting. This isn't about old Antioch versus new Antioch. It's about a board president who is behaving like a child and her minions that don't have the balls to do what is right for AUSD. I am sickened that this is what we have representing our school district. Their egos are getting in the way, and our students are the ones that will end up paying for it. Householder is the one that needs to go. Quote, "From the moment that she took her oath of office," end quote. It's been nothing but her abusing her power, and this is one more example of that. Denise Jones, Community Member. President Householder's accusations are unfounded. This disgusting move has no basis other than to draw attention away from her recent failures and impending removal from the school board. Ms. Householder is a troublemaker and instigator with a destructive agenda. She has proven herself to be immature and unprofessional in her handling of the AHS situation, among others, an embarrassment to our community, and she should be removed from the board before she does irreparable damage to our students. Candace Rowlett, Community Member. As a longtime and current Antioch president, I've seen firsthand the compassion, integrity, intelligence, honesty, and work ethic Stephanie has for her job, the students, their future, and the impact all of that has on the community. Her removal would be detrimental to all of us. She's by far the best person for the job. She's an asset, and her removal is uncalled for. Susan Weinstein, Staff. I feel that Stephanie Anello has done her job as superintendent of AUSD. She always had the students, families, staff, and city in mind when making decisions for AUSD. This action by the school board president, Ellie Householder, amounts to a witch hunt with no basis, in fact, brought about by an inexperienced person looking to fulfill a personal agenda. This action would not be beneficial to the community and most certainly not to our kids. I urge you to reject school board president Householder's action. Evan Ayers, Community Member. Stephanie Anello has always shown her respect for the students and parents of the AUSD. Quote by Board President Ellie Householder. From the moment that I took my oath of office, I have made it my singular focus to create an environment that provides all of our students with a nurturing and supportive environment to ensure that they have foundational skills to long-term success (end quote). Sure, Ellie, that shows. We can all see what you're trying to provide. If you don't get your way, you're going to act like a spoiled little two-year-old and throw a temper tantrum. Try to get me removed from the board president position? I'll show you, Stephanie. Take that. Wahahaha. Grow up, Ellie. Take the high road. Learn from your mistakes, like running for public office. You don't have the chops for it. And Board Member Hernandez, please, dude, grow a pair. You don't answer to Ellie. Lisa Covasino, Community Member. I grew up in the Antioch school system and went on to thrive in my life. I raised four kids in the Antioch school system, and they have all thrived and have good jobs. My grandkids are now attending Antioch schools and have wonderful teachers and staff. While I believe the schools have a lot to do with how well a child does, I also believe that it falls on the parents to teach their kids respect, learning to apply themselves in school and life, and not all parents are doing their part. If you think replacing a hard-working lady will change things, then maybe you are part of the problem, Householder. Bob Carson, Staff. AUSD Board Members and Superintendent Anello. Tonight marks another embarrassing chapter of the AUSD School Board under the leadership of Board President Householder. Another hastily scheduled meeting, this time with the goal of settling a personal score, rather than doing what is best for the students of Antioch. I am disgusted. Board President Householder is rightly under fire from all three employee associations in AUSD based on her inappropriate handling of board meetings. A vote of no confidence by the same three employee associations is likely to be read at Wednesday's regularly scheduled school board meeting. Rather than reflect on her obvious failures, School Board President Householder instead is attempting to unjustly fire a qualified and caring superintendent. It is both sad and wrong. The closed-door meeting to determine the fate of Superintendent Anello is an affront to all community members of Antioch, as well as the employees of AUSD. The other school board members should use their common sense and reject outlandish antics of Board President Householder. Anello has a singular job under very difficult circumstances. She has brought support in the community and with the employees of AUSD. Anello deserves to remain in her leadership position. The person who should be removed from her leadership position is Householder. Bob Carson, Teacher, Park Middle School. Ken, Community Member. How about you discuss bettering the schools instead of trying to remove Stephanie before they remove you, Ms. Householder? You are too immature to be the school board president, since you obviously act like you are still in high school yourself by causing drama where it doesn't need to be. The board's focus should be on the students' education, in my opinion. Name Not Provided. I vote no to remove our superintendent, Stephanie Anello. Stephanie Anello is, in my opinion, the best superintendent this district has had in the last 30 years. She stands up for students, parents, and teachers, the like. She was an amazing teacher, vice principal, and principal in this district, and did an equally amazing job as each of them. This is really becoming a circus act. I am embarrassed to be a citizen of Antioch at this time. I grew up here, raised my children here, and work here. If anyone should be removed from office, it should be you, Ellie. Your blatant misuse of your position should be enough to get it done, but I see you have two followers that make you a majority. That's bad. Our school district is on a downhill spiral, and you are the one pushing it. Shame on you. Carolyn Rotman, Oops, I apologize. Carolyn Rotman, Staff. I am a community member and a staff member of the Antioch Unified School District. I have lived in Antioch for the past 32 years and have worked for the district for the past 20 years. My children attended the district schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. I am a strong proponent of education. I fully support Stephanie Anello. I worked with Ms. Anello at Antioch Middle School when she was the principal there. While working there, Ms. Anello supported the staff and students. She worked hard to implement new strategies to help address all learners. She helped the students who started a food drive to deliver groceries and presents during school breaks when students might go hungry without access to school mills. She supported us as a staff by providing great professional development opportunities and keeping us motivated. And all this was during the one year that I worked with her. After I transferred to another school, I didn't see the day-to-day ways Ms. Anello supported the staff and students until she was promoted to the district superintendent. Now her leadership has guided us through the beginnings of the pandemic to the current point. Again, when schools closed, Ms. Anello worked hard to make sure our students did not go hungry. When it became apparent that the shutdown would be longer than anticipated, she worked hard to get the required tech to our students and staff. Ms. Anello has supported the students and staff of Antioch Unified at every point in her career here. Our students, families, and staff need Stephanie Anello's leadership to help guide us through this next phase, too. Keep Ms. Anello as our superintendent. All Pissed Off, AUSD Staff. Please flood your comments on items 12B and 12C for tomorrow's meeting. Please support the AUSD staff as we do your children every day. Pass this on on all your social media accounts. Thank you. Pissed Off and Tired AUSD Staff. Jessica Davis, Community Member. I believe that the only individual needing discipline, dismissal, release is the president of this school board. Superintendent Anello has done a great job of putting the needs and safety of the students first, especially in these uncertain times. Jennifer Connolly, Staff. I support Ms. Anello as superintendent. She always puts the students and staff of the district first. I am disappointed with Ms. Householder and the actions she has taken as board president. Name Not Provided, Staff. Stephanie Anello is the best superintendent I have worked for in Antioch the last 20 years I have taught in AUSD. Ellie Householder needs to think about the students and the teachers before her agenda. I have never seen Ellie Householder come to a campus to visit the children or speak to the teachers, and I have taught at more than one school in her years of service. Before removing Stephanie, who does come visit campuses and does see what teachers and students are doing, you have no right to remove her. Name Not Provided, Staff. I am not sure if Householder could appear any more childish or impetuous. Maybe if she banged on her desk or put her fingers in her ears? Oh, wait. She did that last board meeting by striking items from the agenda she didn't want to hear. So glad she'll be gone soon. Then the adults' lead by Superintendent Anello can actually get back to work. The teachers are ready for a vote of no confidence in Householder at a moment's notice. Name Not Provided, Staff. This call to remove Superintendent Anello is a little too convenient after all three unions are set to announce a vote of no confidence in trustee Householder. Given the events related to trustee Householder, I give my full confidence and support towards Stephanie Anello. I feel that Superintendent Anello has held her position with utmost professionalism. For trustee Householder to suggest in the slightest that the performance of our students is Superintendent Anello's responsibility and completely ignore the external factors of students attempting to learn in the middle of a pandemic is absolutely 100% ridiculous. The performance of our students should not rest on the shoulders of one person. I absolutely do not agree with this call to remove Superintendent Anello. Lisa, Community Member. In the past, I have been extremely unhappy with AUSD, but with Stephanie Anello, I have been very happy with. I have needed to reach out to the district several times over the past year and a half, and Stephanie has been attentive, speedy, and extremely helpful. I even felt the need to reach out to express how my views had changed since my interactions with her. Marnie Hassig, Staff. Ms. Householder, I find it interesting that this is coming on the heels of a vote of no confidence for you taken by the unions. I am unsure how you see that all of the failings of this school district should rest upon the shoulders of the superintendent. Stephanie Anello has worked tirelessly to better this district, and I'm sure that with a supportive board, she might actually get somewhere. Instead, she has to spend time with your petty vendetta against her. May I suggest that you move on from your personal agenda, grow up, and get to the business of putting students first? Isn't that, in fact, what you were elected to do? Jessie Wilkerson, Staff. As an employee of AUSD for 23 years, I would like to show my support for Ms. Anello, as she has done a phenomenal job as our super since day one. She has always tried to do what is best for students, staff, and community. Even during the unprecedented pandemic times, she has worked diligently with state and county officials, keeping our entire community as safe as possible. I see that the basis of this dismissal proposal is students' poor achievements, i.e. low test scores, reading, and math improficiencies, et cetera. We must understand Antioch's test scores and student development has been at dismal level for decades. Further, as a nation, students' academic levels have statistically fallen the past 18 months, specifically due to school closures. To review student performance after everything our kiddos have been through since March 2020 is nonsensical. It seems this effort to remove Ms. Anello is simply retaliation by the board president, who coincidentally is being scrutinized for constantly exhibiting unprofessional behavior. This special meeting symbolizes that quite well. I have worked under multiple supers in the past two decades, and Ms. Anello is one of the best we have ever had. To remove her would surely be a mistake and detrimental to the district. Name Not Provided, Staff. Stephanie has been a steady, thoughtful, and compassionate superintendent for AUSD. The call for her removal shows the selfishness and obvious personal vendetta President Householder has against Stephanie. To say otherwise is disingenuous. Householder is proving once again that she does not value the students in AUSD over her own personal agenda and feeling towards Superintendent Anello. Conan Moats, Staff. This agenda item is a travesty. It is intentionally confusing so as to get less feedback from a confused public. Once we figure out what is going on, it will hopefully be too late, or so calculates Ellie Householder. What is happening is an attempted power play by the president of the board because of the pending no-confidence vote the following day. So rather than allow the process to unfold, Householder hatches a nefarious plan to try and remove the superintendent. This sounds like a poorly-written soap opera, but it is really just the poor leadership of the AUSD School Board. Householder tried this type of stunt previously with the same deceptive tactics, lack of public notice, and an intentionally vague agenda item title. That time, it was with disrespect towards us, the AUSD staff, because she called an urgent meeting a short few hours after we were released on a much-needed holiday. Now she does so with most of us getting less than 36 hours to draft a public comment. The last time Householder tried a political takedown of Anello, it backfired. The community rallied behind this superintendent. She even tried to block public comment, claiming that the comments need not be read because she had to go to work as city clerk. How in its wisdom did the city of Antioch permit this in the first place? An incompetent leader elected to not one but two positions simultaneously? If it is not illegal, it should be. Now, in a more desperate attempt, the board president is going to try and abuse her power again. Hopefully, it won't work. Our superintendent, district staff, and our entire school community, most importantly, deserve much better. Gabriella Chico Farias, Community Member. The intent of the board's president to dismiss Superintendent Anello is simply ridiculous. I for one support the superintendent and the superb job she did to get our school children through a year-plus of distance learning in order to ensure their safety. We all knew and understood that distance learning was not the optimal option for maintaining the students' progress or above their grade level. Yes, our students' scores suffered last year, but show me a school district that did not suffer the same fate during the shutdown. Trying to remove her using old test scores is the reason, for it is simply a misdirection by the board's president. I am ashamed that the board's vice president is not doing more to ensure that proper procedures are followed, considering the president's blatant disregard for the agenda matters that were simply brushed aside on the September 8th meeting. Furthermore, I cannot understand the embarrassment set forth at the September 2nd meeting, where the president intended to put blame on the administration, security detail, and police for the handling of the incident at Antioch High School, which resulted in a student being placed under arrest before the investigation of the matter was even completed by either the administration or the APD. The president's irrational behavior as of late simply shows a desperate attempt to grasp the last bit of power she has after she failed to get the public on her side, using gotcha tactics and using slander before proper procedures have taken place. I have no confidence in the board president or her agenda. I conclude by saying, thank you Superintendent Anello for your hard work and your dedication to ensure all children have the means and resources to learn in safe environments. Concerned Parent, Community Member. Alarming Statistics. Time for Change Out with Anello. A Fellow Public Servant, Community Member. Honorable Board Members and Staff. As an elected official, I have been monitoring your meetings in order to assist with my own education and public service, primarily to determine the do's and don'ts. How guidance is provided, communication styles, how officials work together, meeting flow, and the overall working relationship between the board and the superintendent. Needless to say, I unfortunately only have "don't" takeaways from your work to date. I will only pinpoint one example for now. When your board president wrote (in quotes) "under the current superintendent, student performance has worsened" (end quote), this statement speaks volumes, not in terms of the superintendent's performance, but in the board's inability to lead, direct, and provide the appropriate guidance for the superintendent to follow that would help improve student performance. The board is the ultimate leadership for the school district, and if the students are not performing up to identified standards, this failure is 110% the board's responsibility from poor communication, lack of direction, improper goal-setting, and ineffective policymaking. I encourage all of you to try to work together as a team to identify clear goals, objectives, and specific direction to give the superintendent, along with appropriate timelines, and proactively monitor and discuss progress rather than turn this into what just seems to be a personal drama and an attempt at an easy out. Thank you in advance for showing us the professional leaders we know you have the desire to be and for being true role models that our students and our community can look up to as we work through these challenging times. Best wishes. Name withheld, community member. I support the new leadership for AUSD. We need an individual who is innovative and forward-thinking. Time for change. Parent, community member. Tired of the same excuses Antioch needs to face is in the district and school board. Please vote in a new superintendent ASAP. Janelle Johnson, staff. Stephanie has been thoughtful towards our staff and students in her decision-making. I am against having her removed. The decisions that educators face today become harder every passing year. I believe she has done her absolute best under some very difficult circumstances. Name not provided, staff. Stephanie has been supportive of students and teachers since day one. She is caring and compassionate, always looking out for the needs of AUSD. Name not provided, staff. It is unfortunate that our school board president has a very closed mind, and she does not seem to register what the public is saying. I fear any and all comments made by the public will be lost on her unless they support what she already thinks. That kind of narcissistic thinking is not productive and does not help our students. David Price, staff. My name is David Price. I am a teacher at Fremont Elementary School, and my 32nd year as a teacher in Antioch schools. I support Stephanie Anello and do not want her removed as our district superintendent. I find the timing of this special meeting suspect at best, malicious at worst, considering that there is a regularly scheduled meeting this week as well. I hope that the board will support Stephanie Anello. Thank you for listening. Paul K., community member. So based on how you run a meeting and ignore rules, I guess Stephanie can just have this item removed from the board meeting tonight, and we can all move on, right? That is how you operate, right? If something is on the agenda that you don't like, you just remove it. If someone doesn't kiss your A, you try to remove them. Must be nice to have Daddy Thorpe in your pocket, feeding you information and telling you what you need to do to get your way. You should be so damn ashamed yourself with the mockery you've made of our school district. Just because you were unliked in high school, and I see why, doesn't mean you get to take it out on the world and try to destroy our school district in our town. Trustee Hernandez, you're a spineless piece of C who has no opinion of his own. If Ellie doesn't tell you what to do, I don't know if you'd be able to get up in the morning and put your pants on. You can hold the door open for Ellie as you both exit the building tonight. Trustee Lewis, I really hope the article in the East County Today is correct, and you do not even you do not even going to be able to show up to this meeting so that there is no way possible for it to be a vote in favor of President Householder's personal agenda. I had high hopes for you, but those have dwindled astronomically. Where Hernandez has no spine and no opinion of his own, you play too fast and easy to make an actual decision to put yourself on either side. It's time to see or get off the pot. Choose a side. Do you want the C show that the Householder circus, or do you really want to take care of our students and teachers? I don't believe this board could actually make the Oakley School Board look good, but damn it, you sure have. Shame, shame, shame. Elizabeth, community member. Anello has been nothing but great as far as I'm concerned. Rhea Villanueva, staff. Let me start off by saying that I have no idea why this is even an issue. This comment card is being submitted in support of Superintendent Stephanie Anello. I have seen firsthand the amount of dedication, passion, and vision that Ms. Anello brings to our school district. She has been in the trenches as a teacher, has been supportive of students as an administrator, and now that she's been at the helm of the district as superintendent, the strength and the foresight that she's brought to our district. It seems very interesting to me that this meeting comes right at the time that our unions have come together with a vote of zero confidence in Ms. Householder. Since Ms. Householder has joined the school board, we have seen the drama that have come along. Is this really putting students first? Have we forgotten the strength and leadership that Ms. Anello has demonstrated throughout this pandemic? Do we want to undo all that has been done under Ms. Anello? I fully throw my support behind Ms. Anello and hope the board will do the same. Name not provided, staff. It is insane for the board to consider removing Superintendent Anello for standardized test scores not being where you want them to be, President Householder. This is obviously a political motivated move, time just right. No twist of logic supports blaming Stephanie Anello alone for the downward trajectory of our test scores. So many other factors come into play, and if you're not cognizant of that, you have no business serving on the school board, let alone being its president. Calling a meeting with fewer than 48 hours' notice to put this to a vote before the board is an obvious attempt to keep yourself from being removed. It is political, pathetic, and in no way best serves the interests of our students. How much time has this board wasted debating these issues and giving time to petty infighting? Stop abusing your power, learn how to work like an adult with other adults, resolve your differences, and do the job you were elected to do. A very concerned special education teacher, staff. Ms. Householder, you are a joke to the Antioch Unified School District and to the city of Antioch. All you have brought is shame and embarrassment to us. You have some hidden agenda that everyone can clearly see, and you need to take Stephanie Anello out of it. If you would actually do your job as board president, you would be able to see what a great job she has been doing for staff, students, and community. Not only has she been publicly praised by many, she continuously strives to do better for all of us. You and your two goons, Hernandez and Lewis, such a shame to we had higher hopes for them, need to go. You aren't representing anyone, staff, students, or community, by trying to terminate Stephanie. Stop stirring the pot and stop taking advantage of your position on the board. If you actually want to help Black and Latino students, quit acting like a savior and actually work instead of wasting everyone's time with your hidden agenda that no one supports. Name not provided, staff. I am in full support of Superintendent Anello remaining the superintendent for AUSD. She continues to do a tremendous job in wanting the best for the staff and students. Rachel Mott, staff. It absolutely blows my mind we are again in another paragraph by our school board president Ellie Householder. If you don't do things her way, she just turns on you and tries to get rid of you. You do not seem to have the slightest idea how to bring this district together or to support the district as a whole. A school board president does not protest with megaphones outside of people's houses and scream over people and block off their entire street like you did to my family at our home. A school board president does not alienate the teachers and staff at the schools they represent. A school board president does not post videos and insinuate wrongdoing before they have all the information. A school board president does not silence others or disregard comments from the community and staff because they don't like them, but then scream from the mountaintops how important comments here when they support her beliefs and policies she cares about. Ellie, you are a hypocrite. You do not visit our schools, you do not come see us in our classrooms, you do not get to know us and what's truly going on on our campuses. As much as you say you want to support the students, you forget to realize that you are the school board president for the entire Antioch Unified School District, not just the students, in parentheses, that includes staff and teachers, and we have truly lost confidence in your ability to represent us in this district. This is just another example of how out of touch you are with what is needed and how to accomplish the goals our district is capable of and working towards. If anyone needs to be removed from the harm they are doing to this district, it's you. Jose, community member. I am writing in support of the removal of Superintendent Anello. Regardless of what one's personal opinion of Ms. Anello may be, it is clear that AUSD needs a change in leadership. During Stephanie Anello's tenure, AUSD has worsened by nearly every meaningful measure. Four-year cohort graduation rates have worsened, dropout rates have increased, test scores have worsened. Less students are graduating with the minimum UC or CSU requirements. All this while spending more dollars per student than before Ms. Anello was hired. Besides that, it is clear that this is the will of Antioch voters. As an Antioch community member and an AUSD alum, I keep a close eye on these meetings, and it's clear that trustees Hack and Rocha have lost sight of who they are accountable to. Trustee Hack, last meeting you said that keeping Householder as the board president was unpopular because the majority of public comments were critical of her. Surely, the majority of public comments will be supportive of Superintendent Anello. However, you are not only accountable to the 400 people who have the time to keep up with the drama of the school board, and you are certainly not accountable to the comments of sections of East County Today. You are accountable to the thousands of voters that made very clear in the last election that they want big changes for the city and the school district, and the tens of thousands of kids that count on your leadership to provide them a safe and supportive place to learn. We have been shouting from the rooftops that we want more from our school district for years. The school district failed to give us what we wanted, so we voted in people who would, respect that a new generation of leadership has been chosen, and work together rather than fighting to keep something that has been not working for years. Do the right thing for Antioch kids, remove Stephanie Anello, and hire a superintendent that will respect the will of Antioch's voters by collaborating with the school board rather than fighting change at every turn. Name not provided, staff. Board president Householder. What started as a young energetic campaign on positive change has turned AUSD into a warpath of destruction left by your leadership. You have failed AUSD students, staff, and the community. If only you spent as much time living up to your campaign promises of positive change and increased school safety as you have spent violating Robert Rules of Order, the Brown Act, and working behind the scenes against district leadership. Sadly, you have evolved into a grandstanding opportunist who attempts to capitalize your perceived power on manufactured lies and deceit, all while risking two other board members' credibility within the community. You have lost the trust of those who believed in what you stand for because you have turned your leadership style into a personal attack against the superintendent of AUSD, Ms. Stephanie Anello. You continually attempt to discredit and dismiss those who speak out against you in the name of student achievement. It appears you have failed to think about the type of workplace you are creating with your immediate response of creating change without following a process of investigation to determine the facts of the situation before discussing policy amendment. Over the past 10 months, it was hard to speak out, but now I understand that's okay to stand against your leadership while also believing that Black Lives Matter. Concerned staff member. First of all, let me point out the fact that staff members like myself feel that I need to comment anonymously for the fear that almighty Householder will come after her or him. With that said, you need to grow up, little girl. So basically, what's going on is you're sick of getting people commenting on your incompetency. You can see that this removal of you from board president position is going to be on every board agenda until it happens, and you know that the entirety of AUSD staff has voted a no confidence in your abilities as board president, which will be presented tomorrow. So what do you do? Just like any other disgruntled employee, you're going to burn the place down before you leave. I sure hope if this vote does not go in favor of the superintendent that as soon as you are removed, Ms. Householder, from the board, that the board will reinstate Superintendent Anello with the deepest apologies of the entire board. Your complete disregard for the rules and the respect of our district affects the staff on a daily basis. It is affecting the classrooms as it becomes difficult to work in a place where the board doesn't give a C about anybody but their own personal agendas. You're going to lose good employees in this district if you can't get your act together. S. Heinz, the AEA and AUSD teachers support the superintendent. Name not provided, community member. I've heard great personal things about Superintendent Anello as a person. However, at the end of the day, she has a job to be done as AUSD superintendent. As superintendent, you are ultimately responsible for school performance plus much more. The test scores over the years have declined. There is no doubt about that. Hiring someone new with the strive to create better test scores instead of making excuses would nothing but benefit AUSD. The pandemic should not be used as an excuse for the decrease in state testing as the decline has been happening since she started as superintendent. Name not provided, staff. Although I am commenting to staff, I am also a resident of Antioch. I am sick of Ellie Householder. Please get rid of her. She is not contributing to the betterment of our schools or community. If she would try to work with differing opinions on the board, maybe some work and improvement could actually happen. This is Ellie Householder's fault. No one else's. Name not provided, staff. I support Ms. Anello and the incredible work she has done for AUSD. Her would removal indicate that you do not have the best interest of AUSD students and staff on your agenda but your own petty politics. Shame on you, Ellie Householder, and anyone else in your pocket. You are the worst thing to happen to AUSD. Name not provided, staff. Ellie, I've watched the newscast where you accused your fellow board members of just not wanting to hear truths in response to you removing the agenda item regarding your possible removal as board president. You are so smug and seem to think you're invincible, but the only person who needs to hear things is you. You are not representing the AUSD students, staff, or community. You are only out for your own political gain. If you want to be a lobbyist, go be a lobbyist. Don't make the AUSD community suffer. It is obvious you have a vendetta against fellow board members and our superintendent Stephanie Anello. Your vindictive actions only further hurt and embarrass our community. Weekly, I have friends and family from Antioch and surrounding communities message me about how ridiculous you, Mr. Hernandez, and Mr. Lewis act at each board meeting and on your social media platforms. You are embarrassing. Not trustee Hack or Rocha, not teachers, not site safety, not students, you. And you just laugh and sit smugly and think we're all wrong and you are right. It is time for you to listen to the community and step down. I encourage Lewis and Hernandez to do so as well. None of you have done anything to help this community, and Dr. Lewis, you only seem interested in making sure everyone knows you have a PhD but not actually doing something positive with it. Ellie, if this vague disciplinary action is against Ms. Anello, your actions will only serve your childishness and personal vendetta and not help our community. I fear that the continued actions of you, Ellie, blatantly violating the Brown Act on a regular basis will lead to our district being taken over by the county or state. Householder, Lewis, and Hernandez, please resign. Confused parent. I am really confused on how removing our superintendent is going to help our students. How is removing the ship captain at this crucial time going to help my kids in any way? And if this indeed is what needs to happen, why could it not happen a day later? Is it because you're in fear that you're about to be removed as board president? I saw your interview on CBS, and I don't give a flying F if you only have three meetings left. You have proven how much damage to increase in just one meeting, not to mention how many special meetings are you going to call before Christmas, since that is now your new thing. Hear us now. We are the parents of the school district, and we are done with you. We are done with the terrible example you set for our children. We are done with your lack of knowledge and regard to rules and laws that you continue to break as both board president and city clerk. You are a terrible human being, not just terrible clerk or board president, flat-out terrible human being. You seem to get off on creating issues and problems where there is none. You and your buddy Thorpe, Walker, and Ms. Khan are just attempting to blow up this entire city from within. You were all just a bunch of bullies. When I was growing up, my mother told me to step up to the bullies because inside there is a scared little children themselves. As for you, Hernandez and Lewis, it's funny that the three of you always talk about the race as an issue in our town and how white people are holding back minorities. Take a look at yourselves. Ellie is running you two. She has you two dancing to the music in her little show. If you want to fight back on the inequalities of minorities in this town, start with stepping up for yourselves. Start by stepping up to Householder and telling her how ridiculous her actions are. Do you have the guts? Can you take a stand? Because the rest of us are sure hoping like hell you can. Confused and outraged parent. David Ferrier, community member. Ms. Anello is a competent, caring professional. She has my trust and confidence. Any attempt to remove her from her position of superintendent would be a disservice to the city of Antioch. I hope the full board can see the benefit of having her as our leader. Please don't let the personal vendetta of the board president get in the way of the needs of the community. Shame, 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 board president. Thank you for your time. David Ferrier, concerned citizen. Name not provided, staff. Ellie, I have yet to figure out how you have been allowed to remain on the board, much less serve as president. You have incited students to protest and vandalize the city council member's home. You encouraged and praised students who were barricading and threatening board members last summer, and now you are acting as a dictator, running the board however you like. It's time for you to go. The same behaviors you were so upset about AHS site safety attempting to restrain, you helped encourage. You, yes, standing up for things is important, but you are encouraging students to engage in activities that can be dangerous for their physical and psychological health and even their futures. I don't think you truly care about these students and what happens to them if they get in trouble carrying out actions you encourage. Students, if you are listening, please stop blindly following Ellie. She does not care about you. Ellie, it's time to resign. You are a danger and a threat to AUSD and Antioch. Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Lewis, stop being Ellie's pawns and think for yourselves. Think about how all of your actions affect students and the community. If you can't do this, it's time for you to resign as well. Mike Spence, community member. The students in Antioch have suffered enough with COVID for the school board president Ellie Hauser to be playing these insipid political games with the education process. She has demonstrated since day one that she is incompetent, delusional, and manipulative. For some reason, she has collected two minions on the school board who are just as evil. How can you suggest releasing a superintendent of the year speaks volumes to your ignorance and unsuitability for the position as a school board president? Get lost and take your two minions too. Lewis and Hernandez with you. Enough is enough. Jeffrey Hall Cottrell, community member. As a former employee of AUSD, I've had my issues with Stephanie. However, she is doing a fine job in her position, and Ellie has to be the biggest waste of taxpayer money in the history of AUSD. Ellie, just give it up, and you resign from your position. You'll leave with more respect from the community if you just move along and give up this notion that you are a community leader. You are not. I'm so glad my children are no longer in school. My granddaughter will be next year. I will do all I can to get you out of there before my granddaughter steps foot in an AUSD classroom. Nancy Maori, community member. Stephanie Anello was one of the best superintendents that Antioch has ever had. She makes a point of visiting schools. She talks with all stakeholders, including students.
She talks with all stakeholders, including students, parents, and staff. She is highly regarded by her peers. Antioch's school board would be a fool to even consider letting her go.
Name not provided. Staff. Superintendent Anello is an asset to our district and a great leader. She cares about each of the students and staff members. She has worked very hard to keep things working during the pandemic and since she was appointed. A sign of a great superintendent is one that also was a fantastic teacher and site administrator. Everyone that has worked with her in AUSD respects her and knows she cares about education and what is best for our students. If she is removed, I can see many teachers highly motivated to go to a district that have a school board that is not so contentious and divisive. Teaching is hard, and very hard during the pandemic, and we are all grateful for the support she has given our schools and students. Thank you, Ms. Anello.
Name not provided. Staff. Ellie and board, but mainly Ellie. Your actions do not reflect the feelings of staff and parents of our district. Your blatant power grab and vindictiveness towards our superintendent is absolutely disgusting. We support our superintendent, but we do not support you. You do not hold your office in a mature manner, but instead abuse the powers by holding last-minute meetings in an effort to sneak things through and by not holding to agenda items that you choose to skip over (in parentheses) like discussing your removal. I am more than disgusted by you and your agenda. We do not want to see our superintendent removed.
Crystal Van Dyke. Staff. I am writing this comment in complete support of Stephanie Anello. I have been a teacher in the district for almost 20 years, and I have seen three other superintendents come and go, and Stephanie is by far the best we have ever had. Ellie, this is in poor form. You like to say that you are for our district and our students, but in truth, all you have shown is that when you have been given just a little bit of power, you misuse it. You are only calling for this meeting because you are on the block tomorrow and you want to show one last power play of your dictatorship. Now I address the rest of the board. Mr. Hack, Mrs. Rocha, Mr. Hernandez, and Dr. Lewis, please show your sensibility to the staff and community of AUSD that you stand with them and support them. Please truly listen to the public comments that are coming through. Please listen to the voices of this district when they tell you that Stephanie is the best thing for our district. Please do not put our district into chaos because Ms. Householder has a personal vendetta against her. Do what is best. Have courage. Vote no against the removal of Superintendent Anello.
Jennifer Bannerman. Staff. Stephanie Anello has been nothing but supportive, honest, and open about her decisions made for our district during this unprecedented time. With her decisions, parents have the highly sought-after Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy to send their children when they didn't feel ready to send them back in person. I feel she has made decisions that have been best for our students and staff during this time. Superintendent Anello needs to stay.
Betty Boop. Community member. For someone with such a completely left-liberal political position, Ms. Householder, you sure seem to take your actions and political strategies in the way former President Trump would. You resort to bullying, calling to your friend Thorpe, creating fake news like you did with the incident at Antioch High School to divert attention away from your shortcomings, and trying to eliminate anybody that opposes your views. It didn't work for him, and it's not going to work for you. We see right through your BS. I am sick and tired of your cronies on your Facebook page and other social medias who comment on your behalf, probably verbatim what you told them to say. Comments like "Oh," Antioch needs a fresh young view. Well, let me tell you, something a new perspective is not a bad thing, but being young doesn't mean you know what the hell you're talking about. You have no kids, no students in this district, no political history whatsoever, no world experience, and no freaking idea of what you're doing. Antioch, it's time to hit the reset button and start over. Please get us out of this nightmare. You're an embarrassment to the city. You need to resign as President, resign from the board completely, resign as Clerk, pack your S, and move out of our town immediately. We do not want you here.
Name not provided. Community member. I am a former staff member of the Antioch Unified School District. I also attended and graduated from AUSD schools. Stephanie Anello is quite possibly the most actively involved and dedicated superintendent AUSD has had. She is wonderful. Shame on you, Ms. Householder, for trying to remove someone who is doing their job well. I truly hope Ms. Anello remains at the district and continues providing incredible support to her staff and students.
Name not provided. Community member. I think the superintendent has been doing a wonderful job with everything involved in her position. I feel Householder has done a terrible job and has no idea what she is doing. She unprofessional and a poor influence for the students and the community members. She should be immediately removed from her position before she can do more damage.
Cynthia Ferrari. Staff. I am a teacher and would like to voice my support for our Superintendent Stephanie Anello. Her leadership during the COVID crisis kept students and staff safe.
Tabitha Hopwood. Community member. Hello, my name is Tabitha Hopwood. I'm a mother of an AUSD student and PTO president at my son's school. I am absolutely appalled at the actions by Board President Ellie Householder. I feel the only reason that she has brought Ms. Anello's removal to a vote is because she doesn't like the fact that Ms. Anello will stand up for what is right and not what is on her personal agenda. Dr. Lewis said at the last meeting that removing Ms. Householder was wrong because of an unpopular opinion, and if he should vote to remove Ms. Anello, then he would be doing just that because she is unpopular with Ms. Householder. That would be a disgrace and disservice to our school district. Please do better for our schools and students. Vote Ellie Householder out and keep our amazing superintendent who actually cares for the students of our district. Thank you.
Name not provided. Before an employee is to be disciplined, dismissed, released, there should be someone in charge who does not have a personal vendetta against that employee and doing this out of spite.
Name not provided. Staff. I am writing this comment in support of Superintendent of the Year Anello. Superintendent Anello has been a leader in this district since she has been hired. She led us through a global pandemic safely, within the needs of students and staff above all else. She has led the district to form the groundbreaking, much-needed Thomas Gaines Academy, which is now at 1,000 students. She leads, not follows. To state that she is failing students based on years-old testing data that was skewed downward statewide due to a change in testing protocols from paper and pencil testing to all computer testing is ridiculous. Then we went into a global pandemic. However, when you're looking at the district and board chose an assessment for AUSD last year during COVID shutdown, I-ready scores went up, showing our kids were learning and progressing towards proficiency. We are transitioning towards priority standards and proficiency skills in an effort to increase rigor and accountability and transparency to our students and family. This isn't complacency. This is someone who's striving to lead her district into a new and improved direction. Householder, you state you want change. You say the district is stuck, but what have you done to insist on change? I mean, what aside from multiple Brown Act violations, posting students without permission on your social media, or throwing epic, power-hungry temper tantrums when you don't get your way? This removal and discipline stunt is nothing more than a "I need to get you before you get me" mentality, and is being used to deflect from the fact that the only incompetent at their job is you, and maybe a couple of other board members who seem to want to talk a whole lot about change but have no plan to actually implement it, aside from wanting to oust a leader, and maybe possibly questionably trying to find another qualified candidate. You won't. This is a bait and switch tactic.
That is the end of the allotted time.
Thank you.
Sam M. Staff. Stephanie has been an amazing superintendent through the pandemic. She has met each challenge, provided the guidance, support to both students and staff. AUSD needs stability and consistency during this time, not division. Students' academic scores will improve as they continue to adjust back to in-person learning. After only 31 days back, many students are relearning school expectations as well as key social skills. Superintendent Anello continues to provide effective leadership with integrity. Thank you for all you have done, Superintendent Anello.
Hilda Parham. Community member. I support Superintendent Anello. She is doing an excellent job.
Name not provided. Staff. There are vast amounts of empirical evidence that proves that standardized testing isn't an effective measure of student success. Moreover, researchers go one step further and explain that these standardized tests put students from marginalized groups at a disadvantage. How can you use these tests that the educational community, especially educators for social justice, agree are not effective in measuring student success, as a reason for Superintendent Anello's dismissal? You claim to be woke and claim you are fighting for social justice, but then you act petty and use these inaccurate testing measures to justify your selfish temper tantrums. We all see what you are doing. The game playing needs to stop. We need to focus on our children as they need us. Superintendent Anello, whom recently won an award for outstanding work in Antioch Unified, is one of the most knowledgeable, caring, and equitable educators you will find. Antioch would suffer greatly without Superintendent Anello. You need to start focusing on our kiddos. They need us more now than ever.
Name not provided. Community member. Why are we wasting our time trying to dismiss Ms. Anello when we should be working together to figure out the problems and finding solutions? The issue to me is that the students don't have enough extracurricular activities, no accountability for when they don't follow rules. Ms. Householder is a prime example of this. Let's hold our breath, throw a tantrum, call our mommies, call our lawyers, when we can't follow the rules mentality. Society, we have all come to accept. I frankly am sick of it. I wish society and our schools would stand up to this nonsense. Ms. Ellie Householder, do us all a favor. Step down and let the adults handle business. Stop wasting our time. I'm going to pass the comments to Director Wisely.
Thank you, Ms. Bettencourt. Renee Washington. Staff. I fully support Stephanie Anello as our superintendent. She has done her absolute best to support our students, families, and staff during this unprecedented time.
Timothy Hook. Staff. I stand with Superintendent Anello and know that she has done an amazing job handling the district during the pandemic. I would much rather see the board bring positive ideas and how we can approve over the constant arguing and power moves. These only hurt the district.
Tracy Grabbin. Staff. Stephanie Anello has been an outstanding leader of AUSD for many years. She has supported the teachers 100% of the time throughout the pandemic. I'm shocked that anyone would be considering replacing her.
James White. Community member. I am in complete shock and taken back how four grown adults have let this child throw her temper tantrum for this long. The city and district is being embarrassed by her actions every day, it seems like it. The lot of you need to be adults in the room and bring an end to this hissy fit she's throwing and make her stop. To the superintendent, I praise you for your patience, and I hope you have a good lawyer because this child is making a great lawsuit for you. I hope you enjoy whatever large settlement you get.
James Gray. Community member. Although I do not have any children in AUSD, all I can say is this meeting is an embarrassment to myself as lifelong resident of Antioch. This board president has, continues to make news every week for some rule she's broken, but somehow it's the superintendent's fault. I'm just in shock of how this mess Ellie has created.
Name not provided. Community member. WTF, Ellie. You're trying to get ahead of your agenda item that you remove like a child. Now because it's back from Wednesday's agenda, you put this BS up. You are a coward and a fraud. You care nothing about the children of Antioch. You only care about your own political agenda. Do us all a favor.
Name not provided. Staff. I believe that the removal of Mrs. Anello will be a great loss to the entire community. She is a great superintendent who is caring and supportive for all the members of the community.
William White. Community member. So as I understand it, the district has an attorney on staff, and I'm sure human resources is not their expertise, but I'm very concerned that the board president is creating a hostile work environment lawsuit for the district. Genuinely, I'm concerned of a liability being created for the district that would lead to a loss of funds for our students and staff. I would appreciate it if any board member would consult the legal and report back to the public in a future meeting. I and a few other parents are just worried about the district being sued because this seems so toxic. P.S. Thank you to our wonderful superintendent for your amazing dedication to our students.
Kim. Staff. This actions against Stephanie Anello are vindictive and without merit. Stephanie Anello has guided this district through a difficult period and put all those who are associated with the district first. I have witnessed her tireless efforts to provide our students with all that is available to them before and during COVID. She has made sure that the students have had laptops, meals, and instructions during distance learning and safe buildings and classrooms to return to. She has made sure that we've had enough certificated and classified staff to meet the students' needs. What has Ellie done during this time but make things more difficult for Stephanie Anello to do her job? Ellie Householder has created a divisive and destructive environment within AUSD. Ellie needs to take responsibility and the consequences that come with her actions. Ellie continued to put her misguided agenda before the well-being of the district. Ellie has done nothing but abused her power, intimidated other board members, and set a bad example for our youth.
Name not provided. Staff. I have worked as a teacher in AUSD for 29 years, and I fully support Superintendent Stephanie Anello and am extremely disappointed in what Ellie Householder is doing and trying to remove her. It seems that this is a personal vendetta and that there is no place for that in the business of our school district. Ellie is not fit to be school board president, and she is the only one who needs to be removed.
Deb Hubbard. Staff. Good evening, Superintendent Anello and board members. Having been a teacher in the district for 25 years, I'm compelled to comment on this special board meeting topic. Our students, families, and staff have been traumatized enough over the past 18 months. None of us need any more trauma. Superintendent Anello has done a superb job of guiding us through these past 18 months of uncharted territory. It's impossible to recount all that she has done for this district, but her dedication to this district, our students, families, and staff is unparalleled. Having been with the district for 25 years, I've lived through many different superintendents. I don't think any of them would have had the fortitude to get us through the turmoil of this pandemic, nor been able to guide and sustain through a year of distance learning, nor had the foresight to envision and create the Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy. According to the CSBA, quote, "The role of the school board is to ensure that the school district is responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of their community. Board members fulfill these responsibilities by working together as a governance team with the superintendent to make decisions that will best serve all the students in the community," end quote. There's no question that Superintendent Anello has led the district to be responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of our AUSD families, and that she has made decisions that best serve all the students in our community. There are no grounds for this board to discipline, dismiss, or release Superintendent Anello. It is my sincere wish that all of us put away the personal vendettas that seem to drive many of these special board meetings and instead focus on the heart of our work. Our students and our families should be our number-one priority. Please stop the drama and get back to work. Our students are counting on us.
Non-tenured Teacher. The obvious disvisionary tactic here is transparent and frankly pathetic. For weeks, Ellie Householder has been proving her incompetence and inability to perform the duties associated with the school board president. She has concocted roles to suit her desires and agenda, manufactured outrage where there was none to support her narrative, and has now put forth statistics with no context, mostly because she couldn't find them herself. They are quite public and very easy to find if you've spent any time as an actual educator. To turn this around and blame Superintendent Anello for the state of education in Antioch without knowing anything about the state of education in California or the US just proves the ineptitude of Householder and her inability to do her job.[1671.11]
She is making our district a laughingstock and should step down to avoid further embarrassment. Name not provided. I fully support Stephanie Anello. This is a witch hunt and a blatant power grab. Becky Lovett, community member. Stephanie Anello has been in the position of making difficult decisions that support both students and staff. She has done, she has done so with grace, dignity, and analysis of data that supports those decisions. She is fully invested in AUSD and the success of its students. I support her fully. Blaming one person for lower test scores within a district is shortsighted and ignorant. Pretending you are working to improve our schools while you've made a mockery of our school board and pursued a personal vendetta is a waste of everyone's time and reflects poorly on our school, district, and community. Jake Van Dyke, community member. I'm writing to show my support in keeping Superintendent Anello as the superintendent of Antioch Unified School District. Every time an issue comes up about either reviewing the superintendent's performance or possibly removing her from her position, the public and staff has shown that this is not what they want. Since Ellie has become president, she has worked against Stephanie in every way. Stephanie was given an award of Superintendent of the Year. She has led this district through possibly the craziest circumstances in any of our lifetimes. If you want to talk about test scores, okay, that's fine. Test scores have fallen across the nation, across the state, and yes, across this district. But wait, that means she has done her job the same as every other person in a superintendent position, right? No. Again, she was given the Superintendent of the Year. Let me ask you a question. Is it going to take Ellie get school board president of the year so we can then put an agenda item forward so she can remove her for, from being president? If so, Ellie, you are president of the year. Okay, now that we have that, the right to put that issue on the agenda, let's discuss your performance as the board president. Oh yeah, we can't do that because you stopped public comment and simply tell people that they can't discuss removing you as board president. Yes, this comment has totally went off the rails and has nothing to do with what this board meeting was called for. But hey, I'm just doing what Ellie has done since she has become board president. I'm just wasting everybody's time by rambling on about something that has nothing to do with the most important people in the district, the students. Other board trustees, please listen to all the comments from the public and vote in what the majority wants. If the majority of the public wants to remove Stephanie from her position, then please do. But please listen closely to the comments. I feel that you, you will come to the conclusion that the staff community and hopefully yourself will want to keep Stephanie, the Superintendent of the Year, as the leader of your awesome district. Name not provided, staff. To really help students, it would be best to look at all contributing factors that lead to low test scores. I believe the number one reason behind our scores are our high turnover rates in students. Unfortunately, our families get uprooted from their homes for various reasons. As a teacher, I've taught six different grades because the numbers change so much from year to year. In a perfect world, we would be able to carry the same group of kids from grade to grade and watch them grow. This doesn't happen. They leave us or they leave us and come back. More affluent schools, kids get to stay in their homes and classrooms while keeping their routines and education running. Many of the student scores that you are reading are probably from kids that are in another district now. Let me tell you how frustrating it is to work with a student for months, see tremendous growth, and then hear that they've moved during spring break. I wish people would look at the factors instead of just blame admin and teachers. Name not provided, staff. Ellie, if your goal is to can the superintendent for the downward trajectory of student success, by your logic, wouldn't it be fair to fire yourself as well? You've been a board member for three years and what do you have to show for it? The only thing we've, you've accomplished is starting arguments that lead nowhere. I don't think all of your ideas are so bad, but your energy is cold and vindictive and that makes it very difficult to get behind you. The vast majority of us want to continue with Anello as our superintendent. We think she's a pretty decent leader. Win us over tonight. You work with us, we work with you. Lead by example and put grudge behind you. I'm just one person, but you'd earn my respect for that. Jordan, staff. This Householder, as someone who voted you into office, your time as school board president needs to come to an end. You continue to overstep your authority and blatantly attempt to use your power to silence your critics. I can say I'm ashamed I voted you into office and I'm saddened that you would resort to petty political moves such as this. I had high hopes for this new school board, but time after time, you continue to ignore the staff and parents of AUSD to further your own political agenda. It's time for you to resign from your position as AUSD's school board president. You do not understand the responsibility and weight that office holds. Instead, you put personal vendettas in front of your decisions to support our students. Dr. Lewis and Mr. Hernandez, you do not owe Ms. Householder anything. Please hold her accountable for her actions just as I hold my students accountable for theirs. Enough is enough. Michelle Turner, community member. I would like to see Ellie Householder removed from her position. She hasn't lived up to the expectations of a president of the school board. In her position, she would be filtering out the drama. Instead, she's bringing drama and then laughs at the comments from citizens. She doesn't take her responsibility seriously enough. I believe that while she is under investigation for her actions in this position and her actions within city council, she shouldn't be participating at the level she is at, at this time. Amy Udi, staff. Stephanie Anello has gotten this district through 18-plus months of a global pandemic and transitioned the entire district to distance learning. On top of that, she has kept the best interests of the staff and students in her best interest. Of all the superintendents this district has had in my time as a student and parent, Ms. Anello has been the best and does not deserve this treatment. Casey Graham, staff. This message is directed to Hernandez and Lewis. Your job is to vote in a way that reflects the voice of students, staff, and teachers. Time and again, you two have listened to hours of pleas from staff and the community and without fail, you ignore the majority and vote on what is so obviously your personal agenda. I have the absolute utmost respect, appreciation, and trust in our superintendent. Please don't allow ourselves to get caught up in Ellie's vendetta. It's petty and I would hope that you are better than that. Joyce Stevenson, staff. Here we go again, board members. Ms. Householder making the personal into professional. We went through this last winter. Now it's not the time to change superintendent, intenants. The cost of doing so would take funds from our students. Sure, blame test scores. It's easy to do, especially given that students were taught virtually last year. School sites consistently work hard bringing up test scores. Ms. Anello is working hard for our students, our staff, and all of AUSD stakeholders. I urge you to do what's best and to look hard at what's going on. Keep Stephanie Anello as our superintendent. Replace the school board president. Name not provided, staff. It, it seems like everything is a reason for a special meeting. Why wouldn't this wait until the next board meeting? Instead of going after the superintendent, which you have done since taking the position, you should be discussing how we can get more parent involvement in our schools. That should be everyone's focus, not the soap opera stuff that's going on at every school board meeting. I can tell you firsthand that the more parents are involved, the better the student tends to do academically and behaviorally. As a staff member and parent to AUSD students, I have no problem with how Mrs. Anello is doing her job. Ms. Householder, your antics are getting out of control. Have you ever taken a step back and thought, maybe I'm gonna, I'm going about all things all wrong? It's great that you say your sole interest is the students, but your actions show otherwise. You lack maturity and professionalism to be the Antioch Unified School District Board Stephanie Allard, staff. Superintendent Stephanie Anello has stood in strong support of teachers and students through one of the most serious worldwide crises in the modern age. It is unfair and impractical to even attempt to judge her job performance based on data from prior to the pandemic when all of us have been changed by it. Let Stephanie Anello continue to focus on getting the job done like she's been doing and drop this. Shelley Underwood, staff. I support Stephanie Anello and her job as superintendent of AUSD. She supports the students and staff. She is encouraging and transparent. I hope the Antioch School Board argues with me, I hope the Antioch School Board agrees with me and will support Ms. Anello. Virginia Moya, community member. I found myself not agreeing with the board president for some time, but recently I've become very worried about her mental state. It's become clear that she has experienced some severe emotional trauma and/or paranoia. Times like this is when a community needs to work together to get Ms. Householder the psychological treatment she needs. I ask that the board compels her to seek professional treatment and stop seeking personal vendettas against the imaginary enemies. Ellie, we believe on you and want only the best for you. Please seek therapy. Infuriated parent. Ellie, on your Facebook written statement, you cite testing data going back to 2018, 2019 school year. I do not consider that grounds for an emergency meeting. Per dictionary.com, an emergency is defined as the following. Number one, a sudden, urgent, usually unexpected occurrence or occasion requiring immediate action. Number two, a state essentially of need for help or relief created by some unexpected event, a weather emergency, a financial emergency. Please provide information to why now you feel an emergency discussion and most likely firing of Stephanie Anello called for this special meeting today. What would she have done to endanger my students in the next 24 hours when the next board meeting was and is being held? Special emergency meetings should not be held for local, state, national, or even world events like COVID-19, fires, smoke, riots, and so on. I saw your interview with CBS and you stated, quote, "Stephanie is playing petty politics", end quote. Is this not a pure example of petty politics with you going after her before she can get you? The union vote are counted and from those I've talked to, you do not hold much hope. The vote will be symbolic in nature, but however, I hope it is an alarm bell to the board that you are not wanted, not trusted, and, quote, "It is hard to imagine a more stupid or more dangerous way of making decisions than by putting those decisions in the hands of people who pay no price for being wrong," end quote. Thomas Salwell. Nicole Guerrero, staff. I fully, fully support our superintendent. She should not be removed and has the support of the teachers in her district. Name not provided, staff. Good evening, good evening, board. I am a fourth grade teacher. I've spent the last two years in crisis teaching mode and now I'm teaching in, quote, "Let's all relearn how to people," end quote mode. Now, thanks to these time-wasting, quote, "special" meetings, end quote, I have to spend my evening writing comments such as these. Yet, in my more than 20 years of teaching, I can't remember a time I felt so full of joy to be able to spend each day with my students. I'm here to serve my students. We are all here to serve our students. We are responsible for teaching them our three school rules. Be respectful, be responsible, be safe. We hold them to these expectation and they rise to it. We are the adults in the room. You are supposed to be the adults in the room, yet week after week, members of this board show blatant disregard for being responsible and being respectful. Responsible board members understand the Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act. Respectful board members would not refuse fellow board members and our superintendent permission to speak. As a professional, it is utterly embarrassing to watch these meetings play out and perhaps the biggest shame of all is the opportunity you are wasting. Many teachers would agree that some very fundamental things have to shift if we expect to see a shift in your all-important test scores. It isn't even that you're asking the wrong questions, it's that you're asking, you aren't asking any questions. Do you know what professional development opportunities are offered to teachers? Do you know with what fidelity we use programs such as Accelerated Reader and I R E and if those programs are even rooted in good pedagogy? Do you know what the science of reading is? Have you sat down and asked teachers what they think or need? We have an unparalleled combined level of education experience and commitment and rather than ask the people who are in the trenches with our students every, what they think, you are a dictator from an ivory tower. Stephanie created a virtual school where none existed during a pandemic. She is the superintendent of the year. You think it's in our students' best interest to expel her right now?
Is this the end of the allotted time?
Thank you. Name withheld due to concerns of retaliation, staff. When I saw this item on the agenda, all I could think was, why now? President Householder stated on her Facebook page that it is because of students' poor performance on standardized tests, but the data is from the 2018-19. So why now? New test scores should be released soon and Superintendent Anello shared at a recent meeting that the scores, scores were embargoed, but there were significant increases. Is this the reason President, President Householder feels she has to make a move against Superintendent Anello now because once those scores are released, Ellie will not be able to use falling scores an excuse to get rid of the superintendent? Or is it because there is an item on tomorrow night's meeting called for Ms. Householder's removal as president? Is that, if that were to happen, she would no longer have the ability to pull the stunt she's pulled at the two previous meetings? Trying to limit public comment at her previous special meetings and pulling the agenda item asking for her removal at the last meeting? Or is it because CSCA, AEA, and AMA are calling for a vote of no confidence against her? Or is the reason this is on the agenda just another attempt to deflect attention away from the fact that she has violated the rights of students and staff by impulsively posting the video of the student who was being restrained even though she didn't have enough, have any of the facts? Whatever your reason is, Ellie, I want to thank you for placing it here now as it gives me an opportunity to publicly thank Superintendent Anello for the outstanding job she is doing navigating our district through a global pandemic. Stephanie, your efforts during these unimaginable times have been nothing short of phenomenal. AUSD is incredibly fortunate to have you as our superintendent. Thank you for all you do for our students, staff, families from the bottom of my heart. Jenny Dunlap, staff. Trustee Householder, as a 37-year resident of Antioch, parent of two students who came through the Antioch schools, a longtime active school PTSA booster volunteer in a number of Antioch schools, and now a 22-year veteran teacher of AUSD, I want to add my name to the chorus of voices praising Stephanie Anello and questioning your motives and integrity. I have seen a number of school superintendents come and go, some that I was sorry to see leave, and at, at least one that should have never been at the helm of the district, who still sends chills down my spine when the name is uttered. And then there's Superintendent Anello. Stephanie Anello, who I appreciate and respect as the current leader of the district, she truly deserved being honored as Superintendent of the Year. I believe you are trying to deflect away from your own issues. The calling of this emergency meeting prior to Wednesday's meeting speaks of your ineptness, immaturity, and attempts to power grab. Stop with your vendetta couched in statistics. You are not the leader you think you are. Stop embarrassing this district and making us the laughingstock of the county. Antioch even made the news from an out-of-state news station because of your power plays. Just so you know, there have been board members who have moved on and are fondly remembered as making a positive difference in this district and a few are best forgotten. Again, I want to emphatically state that I support Stephanie Anello as AUSD superintendent. To all the other trustees, do the right thing and vote to support Superintendent Anello. Michelle Immerick, staff. I would like to get to yet again voice my support for Superintendent Ms. Stephanie Anello. She is a longtime Antioch resident who is respected by the parents, community, and staff, both classified and certificated. She was awarded the Region Six Superintendent of the Year in 2020 and yet you continue this vendetta against her. My interactions with Ms. Anello has always been respectful and professional and she has always followed proper protocol, which is not something I can say for three board members who lied. Oh, sorry, exaggerated the truth. Oh, wait, you were, quote, "speaking generally," end quote, at the September 2nd board meeting in an attempt to create controversy where there was none. Yet seven days later, Ellie, in an interview with KPIX, stated that our superintendent is, quote, "playing petty political games," end quote, when addressing the agenda item regarding her removal as board president at the September 8th board meeting that she removed. I can honestly say that I am proud to work with Ms. Anello. Unfortunately, there have been several occasions that I have been embarrassed as a district employee to see the lack of leadership and pettiness that Ellie, along with others, have exhibited during our board meetings over the nearly three years she's been on the board. I am all for our younger generation taking on leadership roles, but not to abuse it and to use for their own personal agenda. I agree that your responsibility is to the students of the district, yet Ellie is doing the exact opposite. She comments on an interaction at one of our school sites involving a student and our staff without getting the full details of the incident. How is that putting the students first? And now Ellie is wanting to fire the superintendent under the guise of low test scores after the school year has started while still in the middle of a pandemic, leaving a vacancy and thus no work towards improving those scores for at least six months, if not until the end of the school year? So what students will this benefit? It seems like the only one, quote, "playing political, political games" is Ellie. Finally, to address the, quote, reason to-
Is this the end of the allotted time?
Thank you, Joe. Bruce Ellison, staff. The board only has one employee and that would be Superintendent Stephanie Anello. I have worked with Stephanie for seven years as she has steered this district consistently forward ethically and has been very transparent in her dealings with the board and the public. She has, she has my full support. Process and protocol. Once again, this is being, being the third time the board, or maybe it's the board president is trying to politically remove the superintendent who has done an exceptional job. Maybe the president should give up on their jobs. Let's make it her school board job. CBI staff, Bruce Ellison, speaking on their behalf. Speaking for the teaching staff of the CBI program, Superintendent Anello has supported, helped grow, and lead the growth of a successful CBI program. From 20 students and two teachers to the 67 students and four teachers, the program has grown under Superintendent Anello's leadership and direction. The superintendent has our full support and we look forward to working with her in the future. What we cannot support is the ongoing political, non-transparent, hidden agenda of the current board president. The district needs to continue to move forward in a positive manner. Marilyn Taylor, staff. I'm in full support of Stephanie Anello as AUSD's outstanding superintendent. Sarah Buckley Carson, staff. Dear Superintendent Anello and AUSD board members, here we are again to witness yet another disgusting, unprofessional, and utterly pathetic attack on Stephanie Anello by board president Ellie Householder. Ms. Householder is again pursuing her personal vendetta against Ms. Anello by calling an emergency meeting to terminate her for no known reason. We witnessed the same attempt to terminate Ms. Anello a few days before Christmas in 2020 in the middle of the pandemic. Nothing Ms. Householder does is ever executed in a professional and dignified manner. This is a complete disgrace and a complete abuse of power. The truth is, Ms. Householder has no real power or she should not stoop so low to behave in this way. Ms. Anello has the support of all three unions, students, and community members. This whole thing is outrageous and Ms. Householder has gone too far. Ms. Householder is embarrassing to AUSD and should not be tolerated. Stephanie Anello has done a spectacular job as superintendent and does not deserve this type of treatment. Any school board president, any school board member that condones the actions of Ms. Householder is no friend of AUSD teachers. Her behavior only serves to hurt our schools and our students. This circus orchestrated by Ms. Householder needs to stop immediately. Ms. Anello is the best superintendent that AUSD has ever seen and should continue to lead us. Sarah Buckley Carson, Park Middle School teacher. Lisa Sauner, staff. I strongly support our superintendent Stephanie Anello. As a leader, she is outstanding. As a person, she is genuine, sincere, and honest. As a person, she is genuine, sincere, and honest. Anonymous and dedicated staff member. Good evening, Superintendent Anello, members of the board and Ellie. I'm a district employee of more than 15 years, and I'm writing this comment card in support of Superintendent Anello and in disgust and disappointment of you, Ellie. I've seen and worked closely with several superintendents in this district, going back to Dennis Sketch, and a time as you may refer to as the, quote, "old Antioch," end quote. Each superintendent brought something different to the district, but Superintendent Anello has far exceeded all those before her. She is professional, caring, supportive of her staff, students, parents, and community members, and has worked her way up through this district and truly understands what it means to be an educator. She carried us through the pandemic and the, and led the way for many districts through it. I'm appalled at your lack of understanding of the way a board member is supposed to operate. If you need a reminder, it's for the students, it's for the community, it's for the support, the staff that do the actual work with the students. You are supposed to help improve policies and procedures, not hinder them, not put roadblocks up and create divide. You say you are forcing difficult conversations, but you are trying to create a name for yourself and are doing so on the back of Ms. Anello. You use data from three years ago, fail to mention there is a decline in all districts since the pandemic. No clear goals have been set for the superintendent, no evaluation has been done yet. You stand here behind the safety of your screen and wish to remove her on the day before the discussion of removing you. It's not a tit-for-tat game. You are playing with the education of our youth and their future. Grow up, and maybe you should face the difficult conversations. Mary Ferrier, staff. I'm absolutely loving teaching in person this year, and I feel such a positive energy throughout our entire campus. I believe this is partly due to the fine leadership of Superintendent Anello. Her steady, caring, respectful, and conscientious leadership has made all the difference, and not only just being back, but being back and looking toward a future that's bright for the Antioch community. Superintendent Anello is getting us through this tough period, and I'm very grateful to her. Please keep Superintendent Anello. Name not provided. Stephanie, Stephanie has performed very well during these past years and has managed our school district so well during the pandemic. She needs to stay. Anyone seeking her dismissal needs to go. Elaine March, community member. I am Elaine March, a former employee, now a community member. I support Stephanie Anello in her leadership position as a superintendent of A U S D. The timing of this meeting is, in my opinion, suspect. It makes one wonder the true motivation for calling this meeting. Why the rush? Why a special meeting tonight? This is unnecessary drama. Antioch Citizen and Voter, community member. Why is this an emergency meeting? I encourage board members to postpone this decision. Making it with minimal community input on such short notice is the antithesis of honest and open government. But if you must proceed, I encourage you will vote against the disciplined dismissal release of the superintendent. Jessica, community member. Stephanie Anello is the best thing that happened to A U S D in the 10 years I've lived here. She cares for the community and loves our students. She is the one and only one doing right by our kids. She is hands-on, compassionate, and human, something our board members tend to forget themselves. If Stephanie is removed, rest assured that Antioch will then remove you all. Name not provided, community member. Ellie, getting rid of Stephanie Anello will only hurt the students you claim to care so much for. You are lashing out because the vote of the no confidence is less than 24 hours away. This is your childish attempt to, quote, "get back," end quote, anyone who attempts to hold you accountable for your actions. How are you even a board member? Is this, is mind-boggling based on your past behaviors, even being censored by the board? Your antics have made all local news outlets, which further makes A U S D a laughing stock. Trustees Hernandez, Lewis, Hack, and Rocha, do not let dictator Householder continue to ruin A U S D. Take the board back and start focusing on students, not Ellie's personal agenda. You all have a hand in this as you voted Householder into the role of superintendent. Stop blindly following her. Name not provided, staff. Stephanie Anello has done a wonderful job. Why is the board looking at test scores from 2018, 2019 to determine employment? Have you ever sat in a testing room with students? Many of our students do not find value in the tests. As a result, complete the test sections within minutes. This is not a good measure of progress, and your evaluation is not based on student progress. Camille D, community member. Stephanie Anello is an outstanding member of the community and superintendent of schools. She is being targeted by unfounding claims by Ms. Householder. Ms. Householder has demonstrated her complete lack of ethics and unprofessionalism in her actions. She is out of her league, and her schoolyard antics should not be tolerated. Her role is to govern, not play games. The agenda item to remove Ms. Householder should be brought forward, and she should be removed as she has done nothing positive as board member, but only looks to benefit herself. We deserve better. Tammy M. The only person that should be removed from the board is Ellie Householder. The board has run fine until Ellie Householder and Clyde Lewis, who seems to be her puppet, were elected. Ellie's sole purpose is to deepen the divide racially and economically in our community, hence ruining Antioch. The fact that Clyde Lewis does everything Ellie Householder tells him to makes him look weak and disgusting. Grow a backbone, Vice President Lewis, and stop letting her talk you into these radical antics. Anello and Rocha are a huge part of our community and have not shown favoritism, bias, and discrimination the way Ellie Householder is constantly doing. I have children that graduated from Antioch Unified School District, three, and two children I pulled out this year because our school board is garbage. If Lewis and Hernandez aid Ellie Householder in the removal of Anello, it will just show that they have no interest in helping better our district children by being on school board and are only there to follow Householder and her radical agenda. Let's not forget, it was a very good friend of Ellie Householder's that disrupted and assaulted somebody at the Chief of Police Retirement Party. That takes a disgusting person, and I say, I will, and I will say again, anybody with the connections that radical agenda and her own disgusting behavior should have nothing to do with our children, let alone their education. Chanel Crikey Anderson, staff. The responsibility of students' academic and social success rests not in an individual, but in all the community stakeholders, students, parents, staff, students, parents, teachers, administrators, and its school board. Academic success relies on many factors, cooperation among stakeholders, time and effectiveness of implementation of programs, socioeconomic and societal conditions, and home life, to mention a few. The idea of removing an individual employee based on a report of district-wide student academic performance, even if the individual is in a leadership or administrative position, is ignorant, immature, and irresponsible. Name withheld, staff. Dr. Clyde Lewis, you are the swing vote. We, the staff of A U S D, have zero control, although it directly affects our daily lives as we, as we do all we can, can to help our students. We, the staff of A U S D, have zero power, although we are the people who will deal with the aftermath of the vote. It all lies with you. We know the vote will be split to, for, and to against. Then comes your time to stand up for what is right. You will meet this challenge with the integrity that we are praying you have and cast a vote that will retain Superintendent Stephanie Anello. We are counting on you to speak for us. Do not let us down. We believe in your ability to think rather than follow. Your vote to sustain Ms. Anello will show us who you are. Choose wisely, please. Jordan Valentine, community member. I support Anello. Let us stop being so divided and focused on our personal issues. Let us do what is best for our children. Let's put them first, not our own agenda. Thank you so much for your time. Sandra Lindquist, staff. As a parent first of A U S D students and as a staff member second, I fully support Superintendent Anello. I would like to add that I am not happy with the lack of transparency, honesty, and ethics shown by the president of the board. Carrie Sweeney, staff. Our superintendent Stephanie Anello has been nothing but a professional leader in these very difficult times. She has been tasked with serving one of the largest school districts in Northern California during a tumultuous period in education. I cannot imagine anyone else handling all this better. Sonia Manuel, staff. Superintendent Stephanie Anello has done an excellent job as superintendent. With her extensive experience in the Antioch Unified School District, having served the district as an outstanding teacher, vice principal, principal, director, associate superintendent, and now superintendent, gives her the knowledge of knowing firsthand what it takes to continue to propel our district forward in its educational programs for both the teachers and the students. Superintendent Anello has always supported the teachers, classified staff, and students in this district, and has always put our safety first. I have known Superintendent from, Anello for many years, as we have not only been colleagues, but she also served as my child's principal when they attended school here in the district. She has always exemplified outstanding professionalism, knowledge, and understanding for the community. Superintendent Anello is highly respected educator and leader. She has developed and fostered strong parent and community partnerships and relationships which definitely qualifies her to be the superintendent for our district. I stand in strong support of Superintendent Stephanie Anello, Sonia Manuel. L B, community member. I believe that Superintendent Anello has done an amazing job during this COVID crisis. The stats being used for, are four years old. Antioch has suffered through some really terrible superintendents, but Ms. Anello is not one of them. Thank you. Mary Wana, community member. The emperor's new clothes. Many years ago, there was an emperor so exceedingly fond of new clothes that she spent all her money on being well-dressed. She cared nothing about reviewing his soldiers except to show off her new clothes. She had a coat for every hour of the day, and instead of saying the, quote, "the king's in council," end quote, in Antioch, they always say, quote, "the emperor's in her dressing room." Every day, many strangers came to Antioch, and among them, one day, were two swindlers. The swindlers let it be known that they were weavers, and they said they could weave the most magnificent fabrics imaginable. Not only were their colors and patterns uncommonly fine, but clothes made of this cloth had a wonderful way of becoming invisible to anyone who was unfit for her office or who was unusually stupid. The swindlers set up their looms and pretended to weave, though there was nothing on their looms. All the finest silk and the purest old thread, which they demanded, went into their own pockets while they worked the empty looms far into the night. All the town was talking about the splendid cloth, and the emperor wanted to see it for herself while it was still on the looms. She found the swindlers weaving with might, but without a thread in their looms. "What's this?" thought Ellie. "I can't see anything. This is terrible. Am I a fool? Am I unfit to be board president?" When the school board meeting opened on Zoom, neither the doctor or the stand-in mayor mentioned that Ellie was naked. "It's time for a larger conversation on blah, blah, blah," said the doctor. "I graduated first in my class," shouted the other. "But she's not wearing any clothes." "I've..." finally, a little child in the audience shouted, "but she hasn't anything on." The whole town cried out. Ellie shivered for, she suspected they were right. But she thought the procession has got to go on, so she walked more proudly than ever, even as her supporters were being detained by authorities. The end. Eve Law, community member. You just renewed Ms. Anello's contract, set no goals, no evaluation. She is superintendent of the year. You have no grounds for termination, and I doubt you have consulted any attorney for your personal liabilities. You posted old numbers. Why not wait for the new ones that we all know are higher? There are employment laws to protect employees from retaliation, abusive employers, and wrongful termination. The board has been sued for wrongful termination and lost in the past. Board members can be sued individually. Think about what you are doing. Antonio, you are committing fraud, which is a crime. You also caught in a lie to make Ms. Anello look bad. You are personally liable if she sues you. You do not live in Antioch. The fraud charges will look nice next to your doctorate. Ellie has tried to find any reason she can to make Ms. Anello look bad, like posting old data, which is not correct. Ellie is retaliating and has had a plan to hire her friends into district positions. Lamont is your next soup. Clyde, you are in my voting area. If you participate in this, your time is over, and you can expect to be part of the crew that goes down in the investigation against Ellie, which the DA has in progress with A P D. You do not, you do not have parent voter staff support. C T A is a powerful union, and your political careers will be over. Wanda Hom, staff. As a staff member and parent of two students who have gone through Antioch Unified School District and are leading very successful professional careers, I would like to offer my support for Stephanie Anello, our superintendent. Understanding that the school board only has one person that they can hold accountable for student achievement, are we not all accountable? If you've been on the school board for more than one year, you are just as responsible. When you have a district that has 71.6% socioeconomically disadvantaged students, you will face more challenges, and that is not taking in the catastrophic year of distance learning. We are at a place where any kind of structural change in management could destroy any progress we have made and move us backwards, creating just the kind of decline we are fighting to improve. It appears that one person is trying to force her will on us. Please stand with the staff, teachers, and management. If we say that Stephanie Anello is the right person for the job, then we know that we, what we are talking about. Please support us by supporting her. Thank you, Wanda Hom. Name not provided, staff. Stephanie Anello is an amazing superintendent who truly has the best interests of A U S D students at heart with all decisions she makes. She is a person of integrity, she is genuine, and is a great leader. Having her as a leader makes me proud to be a part of this amazing community of staff and students. I am so disheartened that the board president cannot put aside any personal feelings and lead without bias to put the best interests of our students first. After coming out of year, of year of distance learning and 18 months of a pandemic, the board should be singing praises of Stephanie's leadership and thoughtful, considerate decision-making to ensure students and staff are safe. She has done an amazing job, and other local districts pale in comparison to her leadership efforts and initiatives set in place. Please do not take any adverse decision against Stephanie. You will be doing an extreme disservice to the A U S D. Joan Setka, staff. This comment is to both support Superintendent Anello and castigate Ms. Householder for her lack of professionalism, probity, and transparency. Ms. Anello has selected, was selected Superintendent of the Year for 2020 for Contra Costa and Alameda County. Several years ago, I attended a conference by the Learning Policy Institute, which discussed things that successful districts have in common. I have noticed that Ms. Anello has integrated many of those characteristics into Antioch, including feeding families over the weekend and access to technology. Superintendent Anello is fair and takes the needs of all members of the community into account. She cares deeply about the district, and we are lucky to have her, unlike her inept and shady predecessors. Ms. Householder is an embarrassment to the district. It is possible to be passionate about justice and equity and not make a fool of oneself. Ms. Householder does not know how to do this. It is not appropriate to post a video of a student's disturbance. It is not appropriate to encourage people to appear in front of another board member's house. It is not appropriate to use TikTok to communicate seriously. Ms. Householder inexplicably seems to have a vendetta against a superintendent who is both loved and respected. Ms. Householder should resign. Julie Chance, community member. Our board president has shown a lack of transparency. Her lack of professionalism, honesty, and human ethics is non-existent. I have watched her at many meetings where this is very apparent. Very disappointing to have her on our board. What happened to the focus on students, not politics? Marsha Johnson, community member. The superintendent has done nothing wrong and does not deserve this treatment. Householder needs to set her feelings aside and do her job correctly. She is opening us up to lawsuits with her choices and behaviors. Kathy Vasquez, community member. What is happening is simply retaliation. Ellie cannot handle criticism and is simply seeking a scapegoat for her demise. It seems as if she is deflecting attention from her. Let us deal with the real issue at hand. Stephanie is doing a great job, and I support her 100%. Michelle Flowers, community member. A U S D Board of Trustees, I'm a former A U S D educator and would like to comment on your upcoming closed session to discuss Item 2A, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Regarding Ms. Anello, A U S D Superintendent. Please remember that our students' first teachers are their parents, especially from ages zero to five. Many of A U S D students come into the classroom at the kindergarten level, already below grade level, and deal with the challenges of being dual-language learners. Unfortunately, with 25 to 30 students per class, it is difficult to bring these children up to expected levels in a nine-month school year. Then, this disparity continues to grow with each year as they progress through the grades in our current educational system. We needed to target these children early with many resources to build foundational skills. Ms. Anello has worked diligently to spread our limited funding across the district. She, along with the most of the dedicated educators in our low-performing district, is doing the best she can with what she has available. If you vote to remove Ms. Anello, where will it end? Will you then target the classroom teachers, who already must deal with the day-to-day stresses of a district like A U S D? It is difficult enough to try and staff our classrooms like we should. Let's try to find other solutions besides cutting the one person who has cared like no other superintendent before. We stand with Stephanie Anello. Thank you for listening. Roy Ledford, community member. The only person that needs to be removed is Householder. From the time she was first elected to the- From the time she was first elected to the board, she has shown that her bizarre agenda is more important than the education and safety of the students. Her time on the board has nothing more than a train wreck. She has urged students to disrupt a school board meeting and harassed board members, lied, and ignored procedures and policy. Now because Anello won't buy into her BS, she has started a vendetta against her. Anello has been an excellent superintendent and has done great things for this school district and its students. It's ridiculous that she has to put up with Householder's immature tantrums, but the students first and remove Householder. Name Not Provided, Community Member. Superintendent Anello is the kindest, helpful superintendent Antioch has had. I had children in the Antioch School District for twenty-nine years and don't remember any superintendent as helpful as Ms. Anello. Warren Lutz, Community Member. I feel the dismissal of Superintendent Anello is an unfortunate but necessary move. It is clear from the most CDE data that student performance has gotten worse during her tenure. After serving on the site council of my youngest son's school, I was also dismayed to learn she had misused LCAP funds for social media. Let's face it, if Anello has the CEO of a public company, shareholders would have demanded her resignation long ago. I appreciate that she is popular among district staff and our talented teachers and I applaud her actions to keep students safe during the pandemic. But taxpayers would be better served with a proven changemaker who has experienced during turning around a failing district like ours. Thank you. Michelle Cusletts, Community Member. I'm absolutely appalled that our absolutely amazing, respected, competent, and professional superintendent Ms. Anello is being wrongfully and personally targeted by AUSD President Ellie Householder for discipline dismissal release with no credible or even justifiable reason. This is disgraceful behavior on Ms. Householder's part and nothing more than a childish antique that is a waste of taxpayer dollars, staff administrative time, and embarrassment to the AUSD Board, District, and City as a whole, and causes a negative impact on the thousands of students within the AUSD. It is evident Ms. Householder has a personal vendetta and is abusing her position of power to cause great harm to AUSD both ethically and financially. I hope the voting members of the board reject this abuse, take immediate action to remove Ms. Householder, and launch an investigation into her unlawful antics, including a grand jury investigation. You all should be ashamed this is even up for discussion and take note, the community voters are watching your actions closely. Nicole Sedano, Community Member. Stephanie, I want you to know that so many of us are supporting you. You're the most genuine, most humble, kindest, compassionate, loving, most supportive lady I know. You are very fair and always have made sure every decision that you have made has always been in the very best interest of the kids in the district. You have had an impeccable reputation in our district and have built so many wonderful relationships with our students, but with our parents as well, so much so that former students have come back to work here because of you. The love you have for your staff, our kids, and our community goes above and beyond. We love you, Stephanie, and are going to continue to support you. Ellie, I'm absolutely disgusted by your vendetta and petty politics against Stephanie. You act like a two-year-old toddler stomping around when you don't get your way and now this is your way of deflecting because you were caught lying red-handed and aren't enough, grown enough to own your S. Maybe stop breaking the law, Ellie. Let me just say this, it's never been about what is best for the students. It is all about what is best for Ellie because all you care about is yourself. Because let's be real here, Ellie, you did have the, you did have the facts of the incident that day at Antioch High, but yet you still posted it. You knew what was going to transpire from it and how outraged folks would be, but I can say this, had it been a Caucasian student, you would have not made the video gone viral. So my question to you is, did you do this for likes and clout on social media? Ellie, grow the hell up. This little game you play of "I'm going to get you before you get me" is getting real old and people are seeing what a real crybaby you are. Stop the nonsense. The community is tired of your foolishness and games. Chuck K, Community Member. It is appalling that our respected both locally, regionally, and statewide award-receiving and professional superintendent Ms. Anello is being wrongfully personally targeted by AUSD President Ellie Householder for discipline dismissal release with no credible or justifiable reason other than a personal vendetta. This is disgraceful behavior on Householder's part and nothing more than an unethical antique that is a waste of taxpayer dollars, staff administrative time, and embarrassment to the AUSD Board, District, students, and Antioch as a whole, causing a negative impact on the thousands of thousands of students within the AUSD. It is evident Ms. Householder is abusing her position of power to cause great harm to AUSD both ethically and financially. The voting members of the board have a fiduciary responsibility to reject this abuse, take immediate action to remove and censure Ms. Householder, and launch an investigation into her unlawful antics. You all should be ashamed this is even up for discussion and take note. We, the community voters, are watching your actions closely and we will take action. Miki Bagger, Staff. I'm writing this letter tonight in complete frustration and disbelief in President Householder's attempt to remove Superintendent Anello and Dr. Lewis's supporting the call of an emergency meeting. Your effort to save Antioch is causing disruption, negatively impacting staff and student morale and wasting our staff and community's time. Your myopic view of our district failing students is an insult to the amazing AUSD teachers, staff that work tirelessly to serve our diverse population. Your use of standardized data as the pretense for your actions is a lackluster attempt for cause. You personally have shared that standardized tests are not valid and are discriminatory to people of color and families of low economic status, yet you weaponize it when it fits your agenda. You thrive...
I'm wondering if right now might be a good time to take a quick five while we look into this? Folks want to stretch their legs. I know we're frozen. Is that okay? Or we could wait till we're not frozen anymore? We're good?
I think I restored it now.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So, just kidding. Sorry, folks, we were frozen for a little bit and I was just suggesting maybe we take a quick five. But Lindsay, how many, or sorry, Ms. Wisely, how many comments would you say, or like roughly?
We're on page seventy-seven of a hundred and twenty-seven pages, so we're almost through it.
Okay. Do folks just want to take a five now, though? I see people getting up. Yes, okay, let's take five minutes. So it is, it's seven fifty right now, let's come back at seven fifty-five. We'll finish out these comments and then go into closed session.
Go ahead.
Ms. Caballero, if you could re-establish our quorum, it's now seven fifty-six.
President Householder.
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis. Trustee Hack.
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Ms. Caballero. And then, thank you, Ms. Wisely, for all of your reading and looks like, seems like we're in the home stretch now, so continue.
Okay, thank you. Diane Gibson Gray, Community Member. My comment is directed to Ellie Householder. I've stayed out of school board politics since my twelve years as an AUSD trustee ended, but no more. Ellie, do you understand that you have set the district up for a substantial lawsuit? The superintendent may now sue the district in addition to you and Vice President Lewis personally. You both have violated her contract for publicly stating you are working to terminate her and have caused her harm to her professional reputation. You have created a hostile work environment in addition to other workplace violations. You continue to create chaos to keep the focus on you, not the students, parents, and employees. You have been in office for three years. You have not learned how to govern or Robert's Rules of Order. At the last meeting, you used Google to script, quote, "Ellie's Rules of Disorder." Allow Superintendent Anello to do her job and improved education results will follow. Too much time and effort is wasted due to your unprofessional behavior. Enough is enough. Julie Young, Community Member. I'm writing in about this special meeting where you will be discussing the possible dismissal of Superintendent Stephanie Anello and the reasons cited are because of low test scores in our district. Back in twenty thirteen through twenty seventeen, we, when we had a different board, I attended a school board meeting because I was concerned that our district was implementing Common Core and taking federal money. At one of these board meetings, I quoted an article written in the New York Daily News, quote, "Exclusive: Ninety-City Schools Failed to Pass a Single Black or Hispanic Student on State Tests, Studies Show," end quote, September second, twenty fourteen. This article and study showed that implementing Common Core would lower scores, graduation rates, and increase high school dropout for all students, but in particular, black and Hispanic students. I went to the board and said, knowing this study, how are we going to change that? Blank stares all around. I'm sure that Stephanie Anello knew the risks of taking this job, but figured that with hard work and determination, it can be turned around. And she has worked hard for our district, but the low test scores are not the fault of the children. The teachers are Stephanie Anello. It is the fault of the system. The purpose of Common Core is the dumbing down of our kids and guess what? It's working. It's a success. Stephanie Anello should not be fired for doing what she was hired to do under a system the board approved. AUSD Teacher. Here we are again. Less than a year ago, you tried to pull some tricky C like this with Stephanie when you tried to move her evaluation with no reason. Once again, your transparency is not transparent. How is it that you didn't even have the guts to put down on the agenda whom you were going to be discussing? Is it to limit the amount of comments coming in in favor of our superintendent? Is it to lower the comments we're going to be making about you? Are you just trying to sneak one past everybody? Well, guess what? We're smarter than you. My second graders are smarter than you. Parent of Four, Community Member. As a parent for Antioch students, I would like to say that you cannot blame poor test scores directly on the superintendent. You can't even blame the teachers completely. Education starts at home. I know many of my fellow parents who do not help or support their children in their educational process. They just expect to have their kids over and get them back in ten years educated and ready to take on the world. That's not how the world works. Have you ever heard of it? Takes a village? Well, two-thirds of that village is doing their job and the last third is not. You will fail. I work sixty-plus hours a week, but I still find the time to help my kids with their homework, reading projects, et cetera. I am and will always be their first teacher. The teachers at school are secondary to what I teach my children. I'm teaching them how to survive in this world, teaching them how to survive school, teaching them how to thrive and become productive members of society, which clearly your parents dropped the ball on because you are not. It's clearly that mommy and daddy didn't spend any time enough with you and if they did, it was time not well spent. Shame on your parents for not bringing you up correctly. Shame on your parents for raising such a bully, someone who is always out for their own personal agenda, somebody who claims to be here to help children or people of color, but really just uses them as a tool to get your platform out. You will not use the backs of my children to further your political career anymore. This board better smarten up and remember that their mama would say, what their mama would say when they are about to vote tonight in such a ridiculous agenda item in such a ridiculous time to do it. Celestina Perez, Staff. Dear Board Member Lewis, please do the right thing tonight and vote no on the removal of Superintendent Anello. I have worked for the district for seven years, a community member of twenty-five years, and a parent of two K-12 AUSD students, and have been able to hand the hard work Ms. Anello puts in on a daily basis for our students and staff. We finally have a superintendent that makes a conscientious effort for the well-being of all of us, putting students first always. The nonsense that is going on between Householder and the district is extremely disheartening and a massive waste of valuable time and resources. I hope you see this. Please don't fall prey to the political agenda that our entire community sees. that our entire community sees happening at the hands of Ellie Householder and friends. This is the opportunity for you, Mr. Lewis, to redeem yourself in the eyes of the employees and families of AUSD that at this moment basically think you, Householder and Hernandez, are a joke. I'm pretty sure you have read and have heard exactly how people feel. I have faith that you will make the best decision for our students. Please stop the attack of Superintendent Anello, and please vote no on her removal. Sheila Driscoll, staff. This is nothing but a witch hunt by Ellie. Stephanie Anello is not at fault. The district hasn't had any testing in the past two years because of COVID. Don't blame everything on her, the teachers, the administrators, or staff. I'm sorry, but a lot of the blame is on the parents. Make an appointment to come and be at the schools for more than five minutes. Stay a week or so, then you get the real idea of what's going on. Do not fire the superintendent. Fire Ellie. Debbie Green, staff. As a former AUSD teacher, eighteen years, I have now left the district for other employment. Most of the reason is that the school board is out of control. Stephanie Anello has done more for the district to attract new teachers, to help families, and to make sure students can learn. The vendetta needs to stop, and the board needs to take a hard look at their professionalism. This is not black versus white. This is one woman, Ellie, trying to destroy AUSD. You need to rethink your role and resign. You're pulling more support for Stephanie with your actions. Ellie, the best thing for AUSD is for you and your friends to resign and let the district alone. Test scores from three years ago should not be the basis for this. Antioch parent, community member. I would like to just let my comment known that if you are basing the removal of a superintendent based on state test scores, that's flat-out wrong. The state tests are one of the most unreliable sources ever. If I only went off my children's state test scores, I would believe them to be not learning a damn thing. All three of my children have a 4.0, play multiple sports in high school, in high school band, are in school clubs, and play competitive travel sports outside the school. And that's only one of my three, yet when the state test comes around, they're going to fail. I ask of you, does this mean my child can't learn? Does this mean that my child, my kids are dumb? Does this mean the teachers are not teaching my children? No, maybe the test is just flawed. The state testing is archaic and out of date to reality. This does not test the true intellect of a child. I'm sure many parents can agree that our new school-aged parents in the last ten-plus years, the new math, what a freaking nightmare, right? Parents struggling to help their kids with math, trying to learn this new way of math online just to help their kid with their homework? Why do I bring this up? In the last ten to fifteen years, we have changed how we are teaching kids. We have changed methods and ideologies for teaching, yet the state testing has not changed to fit these new methods. How can we expect, how can we expect to make an improvement on education and not improve the methods in the way you test the knowledge of retention to these methods? Studies have shown kids learn in different ways, which is why kids now know ten different ways to multiply two numbers instead of the old-fashioned way that we learned as kids. However, our tests have not grown to meet the way kids learn today. At this point, I tell my kids to do your best, and I don't give a damn what your score is because I see you do the work, and I can talk to you on an intellectual level, and I know you understand the material. If this expulsion of superintendent was truly about test scores, then why is she getting fired for test scores from three years ago? My kids are old enough to form their own opinions, and over the last month or two, have asked how to listen to the board meetings and how to make comments themselves as they are quite perplexed on the manner in which you run these meetings and the manner in which you carry yourself. My children are actually embarrassed by the way you act.
It'll take a lot of time.
Thank you. Karen Rose, community member. Superintendent Anello has our full support. She's personally helped my son out when distance learning had began and went out of her way to do so. She has our full respect and should stay as superintendent. Ellie, stop with your childish antics. Just stop. Jerry Hicks, staff member. I do not support the suggested action that you are about to take. If there's a problem at AUSD, it is in the, on the board. To dredge up old data to justify Board President Householder's attack on Superintendent Anello is feeble at best. In my duties, I travel all around the district, and what I see are many people working impossible, hard to educate students, not kiddos of all ages, races, and abilities. During the shelter-in-place, Superintendent Anello worked in the hundred-plus-degree weather, preparing and distributing laptops and hotspots to all takers. I personally have never seen a board member except for on team meetings or on social media spreading discourse. I wish that we had a board that was dedicated to working for the good of all students, but what we have is one that is pretty much either misguided or inept. This is, of course, my opinion. Social and economic inequities are very hard issues to address. To think that Superintendent Anello has the unlimited power and resources to just, quote, "fix the situation" and chooses not to is absurd. Board President Householder, Vice President Clyde Lewis Jr., and Mr. Hernandez need to spend a little more time coming up with solutions and less time trying to tear the system down. If you listen back to the previous board meeting, you can hear how professional Superintendent Anello is and how childish Board President Householder is. For my final thought, I would like to say that if you call a special board meeting every week, they cease being special. Jeff, community member. How much longer are we going to make a mockery of our school board meeting? This is starting to be really concerning as an outside member listening to the immaturity of the board president, just like a child to take the attention off herself when she's getting in trouble. I can think of all the time with my kids when they were growing up. Somebody didn't do their homework, and they pointed out how the other one cut class. Classic divertive attention. Not only am I surprised that you're still the president, or even on the board for that matter, but I'm surprised you, yourself, or the district has not been sued multiple times from your actions in just the last few months. At this point, you are a legal liability, and I think the district have a legal responsibility to remove, remove you from office in any way, shape, or form. You and you alone are the problem, Householder. Save some of your respect for yourself and just resign already. Residents of Antioch. Ellie, resign. This, it, it's really that simple. Parent, community member. I voted for you, Ellie, but literally, what are you doing? This is a circus and a disgrace, and it's obviously gotten away from you that the kids are what matter. On the news, it says you are complaining about test scores as a justification for this meeting. What test scores? No test scores are reliable right now. And number one, that's not an emergency, so calling a special meeting about it is ridiculous and disingenuous. Number two, discussion of superintendent performance is closed session material, so why are you blasting all about it publicly? Number three, you don't think the timing of this looks retaliatory? Are you trying to get AUSD sued? The way you handled the last meeting was so offensive to the position you hold. Just stop. Take a minute and evaluate why your leadership is failing. I voted for you because I supported your intentions, but your power trip is destroying this district. New to Antioch, community member. Why does it feel like I moved to Jerry Springer's hometown? I've been here for a couple years and have had nothing but great experiences with the education staff I've dealt with. Many of my closest friends where I moved from had terrible experiences the last year and a half, and Antioch really seemed to have their stuff together when we had to go into distance learning. They, hotspots and laptops for us, I had a phone number, or we could call for help. They even had many locations to check our computer when they weren't working. We had access to hotspots and laptops and easy access to teachers for help. My old-school district didn't get half of what this district had. So I'm kind of confused on why this board wants to fire a superintendent that ran such a smooth ship during the worst time in any of our lives. Like I said, I've only been here for a little while, but even if you're basing your decision on three-year-old data, why not take a closer look at the last two years and compare that to other districts and maybe see that we're a lot better off with her as superintendent? They're not. Neil, community member. Dr. Lewis, where, where are you at? Are you seeing all this? You held a lukewarm speech at the last meeting, was not leadership, and then saying in the press, oh, you're unavailable tonight? I know what you're trying to do is dodge the situation. You can't ride the middle lane forever, my brother. Time to get backbone and stand up to Householder crazy before it's too late. I got no love for most of this board, but you know she ain't right for what she trying to do. Come on, man, quit playing and get to work. Chris, community member. President Householder, though you have shown time and time again, you either refuse to follow or are ignorant to Robert Rules of Order and your board bylaws and policies. I want to take this time to point out a few essential rules you dismiss when calling this special meeting. Board Policies and Bylaws, Section 2000 Administrative Title, Evaluation of Superintendent Code 2140 BP, adopted June twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen. The Board of Education recognizes that in order to effectively fulfill its responsibilities for setting direction, ensuring accountability, and providing community leadership for the district, it must adopt measures for holding the superintendent accountable. At a minimum, the board shall annually conduct a formal evaluation of the superintendent's performance to assess his or her effectiveness in leading the district toward established goals. Seeing as those, you must evaluate the superintendent yearly, and the fact that you are referencing Antioch Unified School District Fact Sheet CAS 2018-19 from two-plus years ago, you have had ample time to address issues you have with the superintendent performance. Your sleight, sleight of hand has not gone unnoticed by the public. It is blatantly clear that you are calling this special meeting in a retaliatory effort due to the calling of your removal from the board. Yet again, another bylaw you have decided to omit, Code 9005 BB. Board members are expected to govern responsibly and hold themselves to the highest standard of ethical conduct. Is it ethical to call a special meeting to remove or punish the superintendent in retaliation? Again, there is no denying it's retaliatory. As stated above, you have had two years to correct the issue deemed unacceptable. So as a member of the public, should I hold the board responsible for not taking actions two-plus years ago on numbers you quote today? I will close with a quote, "A man without ethics is a wild beast set loose upon this world." Albert Camus. Johanna, community member. I feel so bad for the superintendent. There is no reason for this to be a special meeting or on any agenda except that Ellie Householder is on a personal vendetta. I don't understand how this is not a hundred percent obvious to literally everyone. To the other board members, please think about what is happening and realize that replacing the superintendent right now would be terrible for this school district. Let Ms. Anello do her job, and stop making the board's drama be something else on her plate. Think about the staff and the students who desperately need some stability. Please. Marcus, community member. After last time, it seems that Ms. Anello is the only person here who actually cares about taking care of the kids. The rest of you are just temporary politicians. If you fire her, we will fire you. This whole thing is out of pocket for real. Nancy Weiss, staff. For the past several years, I've had numerous occasions to be grateful to Stephanie Anello's leadership and professionalism. As the district goes through a time of extreme events, fire, and pandemic, she kept us informed and worked to keep us safe. I appreciate her compassion and her willingness to listen when there is disagreement. Also, it is a, a ready bad idea to change leadership midstream during a pandemic. Name not provided, community member. Ellie, you petulant child, stop. History will not be kind to this era of cancel culture. Trump fired anyone he thought made him look bad. The real person making him look bad was himself. Get a grip. Don't be like Trump. Concerned mom, community member. Let's go back six months when you were all grateful and complimentary to Stephanie Anello and her admin for coming up with a unique idea about keeping distance learning for safety, but still getting our kids some face time in person. Or how about creating an independent study academy that other districts wished they had? Fast forward to one student creating one scene on one campus, then Householder immediately goes rogue on social media about her feelings on it without knowing any of the actual facts? Then all the board member drama takes center stage, and now you want to fire Anello? What? Do you, any of you actually support this? It has seriously gone far enough. She has been the only true professional here throughout this entire pandemic. Name not provided, staff. Advice to my students. Be kind. Be the change you wish to see in the world. Listen to each other. Respect your differences. Help one another. Don't make assumptions. Your view is only one view. Be thoughtful. Your voice is important. Don't believe what you hear online. Don't post rude or untrue things on social media. Focus on the positive. Find solutions. Don't be a bully. Think before you speak. Get the facts. Everyone matters. Be a leader. Be an example. These are things that we are trying to teach our kids at school and our kids at home. And board members, you are making our job much harder with this drama. Grow up, Ms. Householder. You messed up, but learn from your mistakes. Don't make it worse by firing Ms. Anello. And as I tell my kids, learn your lesson, move on, and forgive each other. Crystal, community member. I'm absolutely disgusted that once again Superintendent Ms. Anello is being wrongfully and personally targeted by AUSD President Ellie Householder for disciplined dismissal release with no credible or even justifiable reason. The disgraceful behavior on Ms. Householder's part is nothing more than a childish game, a waste of taxpayer dollars, staff, administrative time. Ms. Householder is an embarrassment to the AUSD Board, District, and City of Antioch. She believes she is in it for the kids. What she seems to not realize is the negative impact that is having on our thousands of students within the AUSD. I hope members of this board take immediate action to remove Ms. Householder and launch an investigation on Ms. Householder, including a grand jury investigation. Jack Weinstein, staff. I have served as a consultant on equity issues for AUSD and as a support person for many staff members. As the director of a nonprofit organization serving schools throughout Northern California, I have met and worked with more than sixty superintendents over the last twenty years. Over nearly a decade, stretching back to when Stephanie Anello was not yet superintendent, throughout the period of her tenure as superintendent. Up until six months ago, I was active in AUSD. She is the best, most professional, and most effective superintendent with whom I've had the privilege to work. I urge the board and community to reject calls for her removal. Teresa Naker, staff. I have been with the district for twenty-five years. Stephanie Anello is one of the best superintendents I have ever worked under. She puts the needs of the students first and values the educators on the front lines. She kept students and staff safe during the pandemic, made sure all students had access to technology, and helped families and staff continuously. She has made our transition back to in-person learning as seamless as possible during these still unsettled times. I hope the board keeps Ms. Anello, as these are still challenging times, and we need her to stay the course. Name not provided, community member. Please do not let the false narrative being spun by local bloggers about the so-called personal vendettas that people have against the superintendent make you lose sight of the reason why this meeting was called today. Superintendent Anello is failing our students and must be removed for her incompetence today. I understand that this pandemic was hard on you, Anello, but you don't get to excuse yourself from being evaluated and get to halt any progress from being made in this district just because you're afraid of letting people know how unqualified you are to be in your position. Newsflash, it was hard on all of us. Most of us just weren't making nearly a quarter million dollars for doing the bare minimum. To say that superintendent is the best we've had isn't something we should be boasting about because if you really believe that's true, it's just embarrassing. I know this is a difficult decision for all you to make, but please don't wait for things to get worse in the district. We shouldn't have to keep settling for mediocrity. Our students need you today. Vote yes on the removal of Stephanie Anello. I will pass it on to Ms. Bettencourt.
Thanks, Lindsay. Lindsay Amazkuwa, community member. Good evening, Superintendent Anello, Trustee Hack, and Trustee Rocha. I am saddened that once again you must participate in a special board meeting that will do nothing to benefit the future of the AUSD school district, our students, or our staff. This persistent vendetta that our school board president has against our superintendent has escalated from a petty grievance to a severe liability for the Antioch Unified School District. There is no basis to dismiss Superintendent Anello. The use of test scores from 2018-19 is not only a dated complaint, it is also misleading. Scores were down across the entire state. Did the president even take the time to discover why? Because that is the year that testing switched from pen, paper, to online. It would seem that the testing format itself is the common denominator if it impacted the entire state. Board member Householder, perhaps the bigger and definitely more pressing issue is that you believe a test is an indication of our students' ability to learn, to achieve, and to succeed. There are eight styles of intelligence, and if you are focusing on only one, then you are in fact not working for all students. It is sad that you have attempted to weaponize one year of data and use it as an indication that the superintendent should be removed without her ever receiving a poor-performance evaluation and on the heel of her actually receiving the honor of Superintendent of the Year. The timing of this meeting is unacceptable. It is a desperate attempt to gain the underhand before tomorrow when almost all of the AUSD is demanding your removal. This needs to stop. Tricia Campbell, community member. AUSD Board Trustees, I am baffled by this emergency board meeting. You have scheduled a meeting for tomorrow night, but Ms. Householder calls this meeting for disciplined dismissal of the superintendent the day before that meeting. Could it be the urgency is not suddenly discovering test scores from the 2018-19 school year, but rather discovering that Ms. Householder may be removed as board president tomorrow? Ms. Householder, you're using the test scores as an excuse. Anyone with any clue about our educational system knows that state standardized test scores are basically an excellent way to determine the poverty or wealth of the surrounding community. A better indication of how Ms. Anello is doing her job would be to look at what policies and programs she has implemented. Have these programs been given sufficient support and time to show results? Does she have the support of the teachers, administrators, students, and parents? How has she handled the sudden shutdown of our school buildings on March thirteenth, 2020? How did she handle the sudden need for every student to learn online? How has she handled the reopening of schools this year? How has she handled the reopening of schools this year? And has she met the goals that this current board has set for her? Quote, "Perhaps you can enlighten the public on what those goals are and how she has met or failed to meet them," end quote. Here are a few things that I've seen. Five years ago, Ms. Anello recruited a couple of teachers to be trained in restorative practices to help students resolve conflicts. This practice empowers students by giving them tools to deal with issues without resorting to fighting. The district has expanded this program and is now in its sixth year using these techniques to help students. When the pandemic hit, Ms. Anello immediately looked at the welfare of the students, starting with the most basic need of food. She made sure that breakfast and lunches were still provided, adding additional meals as funds became available. She ensured every family had laptops and a way to access the internet so they could continue their education from home. With school buildings reopening this year, Ms. Anello was savvy enough to know that many families may not want their student to return to the school, either due to health issues or student preference to learn online. She ensured early on that online teaching would continue to be available to accommodate these students. I do not see where Ms. Anello has failed to provide leadership and direction in this district. I have lived in Antioch for 25 years and she is the best school superintendent I have seen. I don't think we can hold her accountable for all that else. Thank you, Joe. Brenda Larson, Staff. Ellie, once again, you choose very suspicious timing for your special board meetings, but this one far outdoes your others. In a time of so much uncertainty and instability, you want to remove the leader that everyone looks up to and the person that led us with such grace, strength and foresight. The other disturbing thing is that you are only doing this as a personal vendetta, not for any other reason. Three-year-old test scores is not an emergency or a reason to call a special board meeting the night before a regular board meeting with an agenda item that references you. Yes, very convincing. No one can see right through that. You are just throwing another temper tantrum and acting like a bully once again. You reference test scores that are three years old. This district has always had lower test scores. This is not new. Ms. Anello has many programs and interventions in place to address these scores, but let's not also forget that the students have not been on a school campus for well over a year. Give them time to work. Taking out the person that has been our rock through this entire pandemic and is the heart of AUSD is not the best interest of this district. We need to stay focused on our commitment to our students and our community. You need to quit making problems that are not there. You state that the students and community are your priority, yet the only thing that you have done is bring divisions to our students, city, community and board. You do not have any supporters within this district. No one believes in the direction you are taking us and you are an embarrassment to the district and Board of Education. You should know Robert's Rules of Order and the Brown Act, but you continually violate them. You attack our superintendent that was just named Superintendent of the Year, which was voted on by numerous entities. You are so narcissistic that you believe it's all about you and your personal agenda instead of focusing on our community and children. Your lack of understanding or involvement of what our jobs are, what they entail, and what school sites actually need, and you are so quick to condemn, it's appalling. When you don't get away, get your way, you turn to bullying tactics that are in direct violation of Ed Code. Guilty by association is a crime and when you continue to associate with a group that is in and out of the court system and jail. What our district needs is for you to step down. Thank you, Joe. Lisa Cox, Community Member. I just want to say Stephanie Anello has always done a great job. Please don't let her go. Householder, once you're gone, Ellie needs to go. Bob, Community Member. Ms. Householder, your blog says, quote, "To those who attack me for taking this position, you make my point, as anyone with an objective mindset could easily see that the scores continue moving in a downward trajectory," end quote. I agree. My objective mindset also says that every district everywhere is seeing poor scores due to COVID and that maybe you should be working to help your district succeed and not using your position to be tearing your admin down. None of this gets solved if you continue down this toxic path. We all know this isn't about test scores. Anello needs to stay and she needs the board to support her. Former AUSD Student. The board is not here to rubber stamp the superintendent's agenda. Fire the superintendent. She can go past slap-out laptops in another district. The goals she set for herself are laughable. Quote, "Fiscal solvency," end quote. Are you kidding me? This is part of the job, not a goal. She has been using East County Today as an attack dog whenever there is something that she disagrees with. How does a blogger over $50,000 help our most disadvantaged students? All our measurable points show that the district is on a decline while the state has improved. I am especially concerned for English learners who are 68 points below standard in English and 106 points below standard in math. Trustee Rocha, how are you okay with this? You claim to care about Latinos and it's time to show it by voting to fire the superintendent. You are tainting your legacy. Trustee Hack, you're a man of few words and you listen while others talk. Listen to this in 2017. Only 18% of African-American students were college career-ready. Is that okay with you? In 2018, that number was 16%. Is that okay with you? Do you know what that number was in 2019? Less than 10%. Are you okay with that? Trustee Hernandez, you speak about data and the data is clear. We are failing our most vulnerable students. To make matters worse, it appears we are even failing white students as well. Please vote to fire the superintendent. Trustee Lewis, I can't imagine the pressure you are experiencing, but the data is clear. We are failing our students. As evident by the data, Anello was incapable of doing what is necessary to turn this district around and must be removed. You and Trustee Hernandez won your seats convincingly. Do what is right. Antioch will remember. Jessica, Community Member. Ms. Householder, you are the toxic element of the board. Your decisions are self-serving. In any other institution, you would have been removed. You lack the knowledge to run a meeting professionally. You state you have the best interest for our children, but you support and promote violent protests. You voted against having safety officers at schools to protect our children. You point your finger at others claiming they are the problem when you really need to point your finger at yourself. Mark, Community Member. I am sure by now there are hundreds of public comments regarding this special meeting. I'm sure Ms. Householder and her Conrad sending in comments in support of the removal of Ms. Anello along with some teachers and parents. I'm also sure that teachers and parents have also submitted comments in support of Ms. Anello. But what truly makes me sad is the fact that both Ms. Householder and Ms. Anello have a great opportunity to make AUSD a great place. If only they would work together. I think they both have great questions, but who will ever hear them when all they do is fight each other? Question for everyone on the board, teachers, parents and the committee. Who is truly looking out of us? Teacher. It is with grave disappointment that I call myself an employee of this district under Householder's abuse to the teachers, students, parents and to our superintendent by playing her political games and with her childish antics, which are allowed to continue. I worked for the district for 14 years and with Stephanie Anello and have watched her support staff, parents and students with the utmost courage, compassion, professionalism and integrity of any superintendent thus far in this district. I am disheartened by Householder's, quote, "decision" and embarrassed by her. I was, end quote. I was proud to say I worked for this district under Superintendent Anello and the board. However, I'm embarrassed to mention I worked for the district based on her biased opinions and unfounded childish vindictive actions against our superintendent Stephanie Anello. We've become a laughing stock and I'm hoping that everyone will see what a cowardly, jealous and vindictive person Householder can be and see that her political agenda and behavior stops. Name Not Provided, Community Member. You can fire the superintendent now or wait until we elect two new board members in the next election. The only thing that changes is how fast we can start implementing change for the kids. Antioch is moving forward. You can choose to hop on board or try to stop an unstoppable force. Frank Sterling, Community Member. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for holding this special meeting of the school board. I've been in Antioch all my life. I went through the school system from kindergarten to graduating high school and even attended some classes at Los Madanos Community College. One thing I realize now is there needs to be a major change in the way we educate our kids and what we teach them. The old ways ain't working no more and that's why in this past election, I chose to support a Ellie Householder, Dr. Clyde Lewis Jr. and Antonio Hernandez. These three trustees represent the time of much-needed change and that's another reason I voted for them. I respect all the work that people have done throughout their lives to contribute to our community in whichever way they choose. But there comes a time when the systems themselves need some change, as well as the people who uphold the same old system. The same old saying. I put my faith, my trust and the education of my family members and my community to the guidance trustee Householder Lewis and Hernandez set forth. I've been learning a lot about the school board over the past couple of years since Ellie and a younger crowd has gotten involved. I think it's time we as elders offer our advice and suggestions, but leave them as such suggestions. We should not stand in the way of bold new changes that have a chance to help our children. From the numbers that have been posted online, it's clear something needs to be done now. Let's be bold and make some changes here, whatever it may be. There are many things that one can raise questions about in the operation of our school system, such as the donations made to a right-wing rag like East County Today Net and some suspect pay increases to the security or police interactions and use of force on students. And although I'm not an expert, I can absorb information and draw my own conclusions. Again, I'm expressing my support for whatever decisions these board members make in order to turn the tide on these depressing numbers of our education system here in Antioch Unified School District. More power to them. Patricia Marino, Community Member. Well, 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 Ms. Householder's manic episode continues. She wants and has clearly wanted for some time the superintendent to be removed. Let's take a brief history of Ms. Householder's actions in the past three weeks to see if it is the superintendent or Ms. Householder who needs to kick rocks. Three weeks ago, Ms. Householder posted a video of an altercation at a district school. She did not blur out any of the students, thus humiliated the student involved and the others around. She has the video up to this day, even though she has been made aware of the FERPA rights of this child. Under said video, Ms. Householder admits that she doesn't know what is happening, but then inserts a comment about historical racism as if to intimate that this incident was also about race. A few days after that, Ms. Householder calls a special board meeting and sends a letter to the superintendent asking her to violate many individual rights to commit ethical violations. The superintendent explains she could not violate those rights, et cetera. Householder proceeds with a special meeting. She opens with talking about the incident. When public comment starts and they are negative about her, she states that they are unallowable since the meeting is not about the incident, parentheses, even though she just talked about it. The superintendent tells Ms. Householder this is not allowable. Ms. Householder tells staff to scan the comments or better yet, to let her scan the comments to see what are allowable. The superintendent asks for a break so that she can look over the comments. Ms. Householder then resumes the meeting without the superintendent, what appears to be an attempt to limit such comments and Ms. Anello's participation. Ms. Anello joins the meeting only to tell Ms. Householder again that she must read all the comments. When the superintendent states that the district's attorney will be joining, Ms. Householder immediately changes course. The next board meeting, the following week, Ms. Householder called into question Ms. Anello's character by stating that Ms. Anello, in parentheses, we assume, put the item to remove her on the agenda without her knowledge. She then breaks the law and unilaterally removes the item. What occurred next was one of the most juvenile performances I have ever witnessed. When Ms. Anello started to speak, Ms. Householder smiled her meat. Thank you, Joe. Patricia Granados, Community Member. Stephanie, go away, trashy B. With your dumb self, you're dating an ex-police chief and that ugly back, the blue crew and local bully, name withheld. We will come for you. We will hurt you when we see you around town. Yep, we crashed Chief Crick's party. It was funny. Ellie, we support you. We will get you for arresting our friends and bruising them and abusing them. Screw you, APD and AUSD.
Ms. Bettencourt? Did it say name redacted for that one?
It said name withheld in parentheses after local bully.
Nice, okay. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Name Not Provided, Community Member. I support President Householder in her continued support of less privileged students. Every time she mentions evaluations, everyone loses their minds and attacks her personally. Grow up and have uncomfortable conversations. Mariah M., Community Member. I am 32, so I am not much older than Board President Householder. However, her actions are not reflective of our generation. Are we focused on social justice? Yes. Are we ready for meaningful change? Yes. Do we believe that acting like foolish brats is the way to go about changing things? No, we do not. Please stop using your age, Ms. Householder, as an excuse for your disgusting and degrading behavior. It is clear you hate authority figures and anyone over 35. You are an ageist and a bigot. Martin Salzman, Community Member. The superintendent cannot just add slash remove items and become upset when just a talk about an evaluation comes on. Marco Sausalito, Community Member. Ms. Householder, you are a paper tiger. Your flimsy excuses are ridiculous. Using three-year-old data as the excuse to suddenly oust our superintendent. Ms. Anello stated that this year's scores are much better and yet you went to take this action prior to tomorrow when they are due to be released to the public. You are a total and utter jerk. The community despises you. Please do us a favor and resign. Clarissa Marston, Community Member. Our kids deserve better than our superintendent. Children of black slash Latino heritage consistently underperform in our school district and that topic is never, ever addressed without the initiative Ellie Householder shows. We can do better as a whole. I support our school board president. Michael P., Community Member. Good afternoon, Ms. Householder and Mr. Lewis and the rest of the board. I am a parent of four students in AUSD. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Anello, the superintendent, last spring while I was picking up homework packets when the school shut down. I first would like to tell you, tell her, I am so sorry. I was so frustrated and lashed out at her because I was just overwhelmed on how my wife and I were going to support our children while not in school and you assisted and supported us and it meant the world to us. Thank you, Ms. Anello, for caring. As the current board is trying to remove you, I would hope that they do not remove you and respect the leadership you have provided to students and families. Raymond Grant, Community Member. Ellie, the people of my community stand with you. It is time to challenge the status quo and make some much-needed change to our city. Let young people express their views without making them into martyrs. Tom Bruno, Community Member. Board, are you really going to let two proven liars, Antonio and Ellie, talk you into removing one of the best leaders the district has ever had? What's Ellie, Antonio and Clyde's angle? Is it that you, Dr. Clyde Lewis, with your doctorate in education, believe you should be the superintendent? Has that been the plan all along? If so, you will not be supported by the community, parents or staff. Griselda Moore, Community Member. Our children can do better. It is time to hold Superintendent Anello responsible for her subpar performance. What is so difficult about looking at data and evaluating it? Isn't she supposed to be an employee of the board? Focusing on Ellie Householder and insulting her for five hours every night does nothing for our kids. At least she fights for what she believes in. Remove Anello as superintendent. Name Not Provided, Community Member. I support Ellie Householder and all the difficult work she faces by challenging her board. You can love your city and still want it to do better. Marie Crandell, Community Member. Ellie Householder needs to resign. She's an embarrassment to the Antioch Unified School District, its staff, students and parents. Board members, I urge you to use your good conscience as well as common sense and reject what Ms. Householder is trying to do. Push her not-so-hidden agenda through and ruin Ms. Anello's reputation and career. You all know the superintendent has done a fantastic job for many years and has always put the best interest of all, of the students first and foremost. To President Householder, enough is enough, Ellie. Your vendetta against the superintendent is disgusting and we all know you have done some unlawful things to push your agenda. I saw firsthand the content of your character when you made your entire graduation speech at Deer Valley about you. I can tell you that parents were disgusted and were calling you narcissist, myself included. You took a whopping ten minutes for your speech, whereas our outstanding valedictorian was barely allotted two minutes and 30 seconds for his. He deserves so much more than that. How dare you? To Superintendent Anello, please know you have this entire community's full support behind you. We will not rest until this joke of a president is removed from office and we are certainly not going to stand by and let her tarnish your good name and all your hard work by letting this stravagistic state keep going. Name Not Provided. I want to express my support for the board president and encourage the board to be more open to criticism. The superintendent is behind-the-scenes bully. Do you actually have a problem with kids of different ethnic backgrounds? I get the impression that she straight up just doesn't like people of color excelling in her city. Brad McIntyre, Community Member. Ellie, we've been watching your attempts to bully and harass the superintendent since you joined the board. Ms. Anello, how do you plan to spend your big lawsuit winnings? Ellie, how do you plan to pay to defend yourself as you surely won't be covered by the district's insurance? Your actions were not sanctioned by the board, but you will be paying. Ms. Anello, every time you get a paycheck, if you continue on your witch hunt. Given how little money you will most likely make, be prepared to live in your van down by the river. Name Not Provided. President Householder, I want to remind you that you have lots of supporters who see your work and feel empowered. As a young teenager, I always feel like our concerns are not really voiced. Everything is about raises and not changing the way of things. I feel emboldened and inspired by your crusade. Stay strong, the young ones are with you. Name Not Provided. The superintendent always loses her composure when it comes to talking about her performance. Raises for her position come by easily and without much controversy, but mention checking the data and she loses her mind. I support President Householder tonight. Name Not Provided. Remove the superintendent from her job. I am tired of watching someone who seems to be out of touch with everyone that is not in her group of lackeys try and cry crocodile tears when she gets questions. Name Not Provided, Staff. If Anello is fired, she has a very solid case for wrongful termination. That is going to cost the district billions of dollars. But Ellie only wants what's best for kids, right? No worrying about the already limited resources because she wants Anello gone yesterday. Yep, no negative performance evaluations. Anello was actually Superintendent of the Year. Neighboring districts have sent their kids to us because of the TGVA and neighboring supers have gone to her for advice and leadership over the last few years. and neighboring supers have gone to her for advice and leadership over the last few years. But yet, she needs to be fired because of years-old testing data. By the way, the most recent testing data results came when there was a shift from paper pencil to all online, and scores went down statewide. Then we were in a global pandemic in which Anello was praised for her leadership by the board. So if this isn't retaliation, Ellie, then why the sudden urgency when results have been the same since eighteen, nineteen testing? You know, before a pandemic? Now, now let's oust her because we want change with no plan to get there. Let's oust her because Ellie needs to get her before Anello can get her. This is embarrassing. Householder is an immature crybaby whiner who spends more time trying to wriggle herself out of situations she got herself into than actually learning how to do her job effectively. She's on a power trip and it's disgusting to witness. Then she claims she's being attacked. Stop breaking the law, Ellie, and maybe people will get off your back once in a while. I fully support Superintendent Anello. We are lucky to have her. Carlos Martinez. I support Ellie and her notion to make the school district more egalitarian. She has always had the difficult conversations, and she always takes the blame for it all. I hope the other board trustees can look past what the consequences might be and just do what is right. Name not provided. Regardless of what happens tonight, I stand with Ellie Householder. The board has always reacted so violently whenever a semblance of change is brought up, but we'll be stuck in the past as long as we're not willing to question things. Please do not remove her simply for bringing things up. Name not provided. Removing President Householder sets an extremely dangerous precedent. Are we to fire every future president because we don't quote "like" end quote them? The board is absolutely discouraging every future member for bringing up doubts or talking about change. This is a no-brainer. Whether you agree with Householder or not, she should not be removed for calling out the superintendent. Carter Nolan, community member. I support Ellie Householder. Do not remove and discourage our younger representatives because they think differently. Name not provided, community member. Please put a stop to Stephanie Anello's bulletproof reign. This is an employee. Why is she so untouchable that all her supporters lose their mind every time she gets attacked? If it, if he doesn't perform, she has to go. Stop trying to make everything about Ellie Householder. Lisa, community member. Stephanie Anello has a bit, Stephanie Anello has been a huge asset to AUSD. Parents do not want her removed. Joe, community member. I am very pleased with the help from Ms. Anello for my son. Name not provided, community member. I see a board I'd at least stand by as their president gets crucified over and over and over. Every meeting Ellie Householder is honest about her views and constantly condemned while the rest of you sit there and pick sides according to what is easier. I'm not saying you don't care about the kids, but you can surely be as bold as her and fight for what you believe in. Do not remove her. Marie, community member. Thank you for your hard work, Stephanie. She truly cares about kids. Maria G., community member. For eighteen months, Superintendent Anello has led the Antioch Unified School District through the most unimaginable time, a global pandemic. She moved the district into virtual learning quicker than any of our neighboring districts. She made sure every student who needed it had access to a laptop in a hotspot. She made sure students were fed. She made sure staff had all the personal protective equipment, equipment they needed. When that was done, she didn't stop there. She had the forethought to create a virtual academy so when schools reopened, families who did not want to have their children attend school in person had a safe alternative. I cannot fathom how the board could even be considering removing Ms. Anello as a superintendent. Someone will need to explain this one to me. Name not provided, community member. As a lifetime resident of Antioch and a current employee of AUSD for over sixteen years, I am saddened and appalled of the behavior of some members of the AUSD school board. The constant attacks against Ms. Anello is uncalled-for and is a waste of time and resources. She is highly respected among AUSD staff, parents, and community members. The call to remove Ms. Anello is part of larger political conspiracy led by Ms. Householder and Mayor Thorpe, supported by Trustee Hernandez, to further the divide they have created in the city of Antioch. I, like many community and AUSD staff members, support Ms. Anello as superintendent of schools. She cares about the welfare and safety of all students, teachers, and other AUSD staff members. Mike Conley, community member. Ellie, it sickens me that you want to retaliate against Stephanie Anello. You are opening up AUSD for a lawsuit, and you are setting yourself up for a civil suit from Stephanie Anello. Also, the rest of the board that follows your footsteps is setting themselves up for the same. You can't create a hostile work environment. Ellie, you are over your head and need to step down. Don't let your mouth write a check you can't cash. Dr. Clyde Lewis, you ran on your word that you will be a leader, but by your actions, being a follower and a puppet for Ellie. Dr. Lewis, start leading and stop following. You can start leading by letting Stephanie Anello do her job and dismiss Ellie as the president. She has way too many documented lies. Thank you, Mike C. Name not provided, staff. I stand with President Householder. The superintendent should be the one that is removed. A concerned community member. Good evening, board, and thank you in advance for listening to my comment. I would like to share a couple of points I hope you will seriously consider when you convene in closed session to discuss the dismissal release of Superintendent Anello. Has Superintendent Anello failed to meet any of the goals you have set for herself? Well, this one is easy because you have not set any goals for her or yourselves. Was Superintendent Anello given an opportunity to address any recommendations from her evaluation? Oh, yeah, this one is easy, too. Since you didn't evaluate her in June, there are no recommendations from the board. What about Superintendent, Superintendent Anello's rights as an employee? Board policy 2140, superintendent's evaluation states, quote, "The board shall meet in closed session with the superintendent to discuss the evaluation." Government Code 54957, end quote. Between derogatory statements President Householder has posted to social media and statements she has made in the interviews, there's plenty of evidence showing that President Householder has been violating BP 2140 by evaluating the superintendent in public. Board by law 9005 states that, quote, "To maximize board effectiveness and public confidence in district governance, board members are expected to govern responsibly and hold themselves to the highest standards of ethical conduct," end quote. Does this describe the actions of President Householder? Clearly not. In fact, her actions show reckless disregard and willful misconduct, which violates Board bylaw 9000 legal protection. Board bylaw now thought, 9000 also states that board members, quote, "Protection against liability" shall not apply when one, the board member acted with will for criminal misconduct, gross negligence, recklessness, or a conscious flagrant indifference," end quote. President Householder has clearly violated not only board policy, but also Superintendent Anello's rights. Superintendent Anello would already be well within her rights to sue the district as well as President Householder personally. Please don't add to the list of violations by voting for Superintendent Anello's removal. Maxwell. So let me get this straight. Ellie, you post a video of a student being restrained without, without having any of the facts, which you even stated in your post, and then blow it out of proportion. This backfired as the community was outraged by what you did. You then tried to call a special meeting about the student and incident, but according to records released by the media, Superintendent Anello didn't agree with the agenda items you proposed as they violated the rights of students, employees, ethic codes, and board policy. Next, you hold an emergency meeting on September second to address policies and procedures. However, at that meeting, when it becomes evident that the comments submitted by the public overwhelmingly called you out for using race to divide the community and asking you to resign, you tried to dismiss them. More outrage from the public. Then at the regularly scheduled board meeting on September eighth, you unilaterally polled an agenda item that was submitted by another board member. The item you polled was your own removal as president, which, based on public records released by the media, you were aware of the, aware of prior to the meeting. Public outrage again. Next, during an interview with Juliette Goodrich of KPIX on September ninth, you tried to deflect by blaming Superintendent Anello for, quote, "playing petty politics," end quote. In the interview, Ms. Goodrich referred to your actions as a, quote, "misuse of power," end quote. KPIX never, KPIX aired a response by Superintendent Anello where she stated that she has, quote, "never winched, witnessed such a blatant misuse of power," end quote. The agenda for the September twenty-second meeting was posted on Friday, September seventeenth, and the item calling for your removal as president was on it again, parentheses, apparently at the request of two board members, in parentheses. Then on the following Monday, you called a special meeting for the removal of the superintendent. Placing the removal of the superintendent's removal has nothing to do with increasing test scores from three years ago. This is just another attempt by you to deflate, deflect, and retaliate. To the rest of the board, please remember that you represent the students and families in AUSD. We have made it clear that we want Superintendent.
That's the end of the allotted time.
Thank you, Joe. Black Lives Matter, community member. Thank you, President Householder, for taking this daring move for the students of Antioch. Despite looking promising at Dallas Ranch and AMS, Dr. Anello has succumbed to the old Antioch ways, pledging her allegiance to the Rocha cartel, ignoring community efforts to partner in improving the schools, especially for black children, worrying about, worrying more about being respected by the Rotary and Kiwanis than the kids who need the most support, and having an, quote, "intimate," end quote, relationship with corrupt Antioch cops. Certainly, the board can find a candidate who can represent the actual kids of Antioch. Not the one Dr. Anello and Trustee Rocha wished were the actual kids of Antioch. I hope this board has the courage to cut bait and move on. Robert Greenfield, community member. I am embarrassed to have my child in the AUSD with the way this board almost weekly. Ellie, you have a complete embarrassment to the city of Antioch, and I cannot wait for your tenure to end, and we finally get a mature adult in your seat. You should be ashamed of yourself. Josh Eisenbarger, CSCA, Antioch Chapter Eighty-Five President. Good evening, school board, Superintendent Anello and our community. It's difficult to write something when you have already been told that the mere act of writing it means that you do not want to see all children educated solely because you have a differing opinion from those who claim absolute truth. It saddens me that instead of working together, we are dividing our community. I wholly agree that this is not about, quote, "old Antioch versus new Antioch," end quote. It does, however, have nothing to do with equity, as has been stated. I believe this to be a personal vendetta, a three, as three-year-old test scores do not show the current state of our students' progress. We, as a district, have gone through very difficult times during COVID-19, but we did it together, and we did it under Superintendent Anello's leadership with all students' education in mind. Removing a superintendent that has been an amazing leader, not only in our community, but to the communities around us, especially through a pandemic, is mind-blowing. To all school board members, please remember that Stephanie Anello was voted Superintendent of the Year in Contra Costa and Alameda Counties. She received this honor not because she played a political game, but because of her love and dedication to educating all children in Antioch, mine included. AUSD parent, community member. Every person on the AUSD board needs to go. You are all making this community a joke. So much misuse of power in education. Dalu Lingman, staff. I support Stephanie Anello. Please stop the petty power plays and write policy to make change. Michael Saghorn, staff. Trustees, there is no valid reason for Ms. Householder's action and public behavior. This is plum wrong. Don't succumb to the rhetoric of a trustee with no business, life, or educational experience. Ms. Householder, you are the wrong fit for this position. Please resign. Concerned mother of three at Antioch High School. Once again, I'm having to take time from my busy day as a nurse who actually works with children to focus on school board issues, which are no better than a poorly camouflaged attempt at a first strike at Ms. Anello. This attempt is pit, is pitiful at least and mind-numbing in your obvious scramble for power and control. Ms. Householder, what would you, what you do not realize, this has quickly become your personal battle at Little Big Horn. Like General Lester, who charged into battle with no escape route or thought to the large encampment nearby, he went headfirst in with only his perceived importance, and in turn, he and his soldiers were decimated by the Sioux and Cheyenne warriors. The parents of this town is that large encampment you're ignoring, and our comments are us surrounding and getting ready to smother you. You do not like facing a vote of no confidence by all three unions. Sorry, but the employees do not have confidence in you, and they have the right to call it. You and your family, board member, lied regarding, your fellow board member, lied regarding the number of complaints from parents has been exposed. Only two emails were located expressing concern, and one was generated by the mayor's office to have you in sight problems. You are up for a second vote in less than a month to remove you from your seat as president. Take this as a hint. You have repeatedly been noted to, or a tip to break Robert Rules of Order, Brown's Law, William Zaxton employee rights. You come to this battle with old data against Ms. Anello. Parents need to take more responsibility to their children and their testing. If my children were not performing, I would not be blaming the superintendent but my children. Your Machiavellianism shows through in every one of your actions. You are desperate, you are afraid, you are lashing out like an animal. At this point, you should be internet-muzzled. Ms. Anello has successfully moved this district through a pandemic, long-distance learning, environmental hazards, and the day-to-day challenges that come. Children who want to are excelling. If you fire Ms. Anello, this will be the last straw. You will be voted out, and your political hopes will be over, just like Mr. Hernandez and Dr. Lewis who have followed you down this drain. James Lewis Brown, community member. As a parent of two AUSD students, I am complete shock that you are trying to remove such a valuable asset to the community. Our students are incredibly lucky to have such a great superintendent, and frankly, I'm disgusted by Ellie Householder's behavior. She's acting like a child that never has been told no in her life. Not only should she not be the board president, let alone a board member, I really hope her parents give her the spanking she should have gotten as a child. This is just so embarrassing. David Ferrier, community member. I first met Superintendent Anello when my son was a student at Dallas Ranch Middle School. They were having coffee and donuts for parents to meet the new superintendent. Ms. Anello was very welcoming, courteous, and a pleasure to speak with. My son is now a senior at Deer Valley High School. In that time, since I met Ms. Anello, my opinion of her has not changed. I feel she is a competent leader, a good communicator, and a positive influence on the Antioch Unified School District. I feel any disruption in her employment would be a major setback for the city of Antioch. I feel the school board president has been a major distraction to our community and wholeheartedly support her removal from the position of school board president. Thank you, David Ferrier. Lorena Babbie, staff. As a teacher coming back into school with COVID still a very real threat, I find the timing of this meeting and action quite short-sighted and seemingly vindictive. This is the second time that the same board has called emergency meetings to try to displace Ms. Anello, which indicated a more personal issue than professional. Our school has been reeling since we began with students trying to acclimate to coming back to structure in classrooms. This action of disrupting the leadership of the district is nothing short of insanity. It appears these actions are more like one of the board members' issues against Ms. Anello than any indication of her, of her performance in her job. At this point, the last thing we need is a district without a leader. As a teacher at a restorative school, perhaps it would be better if restorative action was taken between the two individuals rather than drag everyone through the upheaval of losing the captain of the ship as we float through waters teeming with icebergs. Mickey Serendipity, community member. You guys should get your acts together. If the school board doesn't look professional, do you think schools, teachers, parents, and students will step up? Not following Robert's Rules of Order, calling meetings with typos, how are we supposed to be confident in you all? Using a bunch of scores that show how poor our schools perform should be a wake-up call for you all to do something real instead of squabble and play politics. These numbers put you, the teachers, and all of us parents to shame. Ms. Householder, you can complain that things are bad, but I fail to see you providing any tangible solution or analysis why it is the way it is. You claim that under the current superintendent, the statistics went down even more, but these are just soundbites designed to hide a systemic failure of which you are part of. Statistics like the one you quote are complex and are subject to underlying demographics and other factors. Linking the trends, parentheses, which you don't display in parentheses to the superintendent's presence has not been done, nor do you compare the trends to neighboring districts or provide any context. I shouldn't be surprised, of course, this all reeks of amateur hour. If you really feel strongly about the quality of education in our school district, and you have the need to blame someone, look at yourself. You are the chair. The buck stops with you. Resign. Perhaps someone else can do better. If not, get yourself re-elected with a vengeance and show them how it's done. For now, I'm not impressed. Our schools are failing, and you just play games. Don't play with the future of our kids and start acting professionally. Name not provided, staff. Respectfully support Stephanie Anello as superintendent of AUSD. She is an excellent leader during exceptionally challenging pandemic times. She has my one hundred percent support. Requesting removal of Ellie Householder from the president of the school board and seeking her resignation of the school board due to the lack of experience and inability to follow civil and legal protocol based on her performance to date. My vote of no confidence. Name not provided, community member. Here we go again. This blatant misuse of power by Ellie and her minions is disgusting. Their behavior is atrocious, and all three should be removed immediately. There are more mature ways to approach problems than what I am seeing. It's like watching kindergarten fight, kindergartners fight over toys at recess. Unacceptable. I vote for Stephanie to stay in her position. It would be a disservice to this district if we lose her due to this crap. Name not provided, staff. I am complete support, I'm in complete support of Stephanie Anello. She puts her heart and soul into this district and has been very supportive of staff. She loves this community, and students are her top priority. To even be considering disciplinary action is sickening and disheartening. I believe that now is not the time for personal vendettas, but rather unity. We need to be unified in support. We need the board to know that trying to dismantle our district in the middle of a pandemic is not acceptable. Sandra Lindquist, community member and staff. As a parent and staff member, I would like to say I fully support Superintendent Anello and would also like to say I do not like the lack of transparency, honesty, and ethics shown by the president of the board. Name not provided, staff. Hello, I am an employee of AUSD, and this meeting is embarrassing to the district and just goes to show what a broken foundation we have. and just goes to show what a broken foundation we have. Not only is it embarrassing to staff, but as well as the students and family who are enrolled at AUSD. I feel that Stephanie Anello has always supported her staff and done the best to her abilities to make sure that her staff and families enrolled are taken care of as best possible and always made us a priority. It's obvious this is all drama and immature. The one we should be discussing in removal about is Ellie Housewrecker. And yes, I know her last name is spelt wrong. She needs to get off her high horse and grow up and take some lessons about what not to do when you are a president and a school board. Just like she took off the agenda, the discussion of her removal, Stephanie deserves to take that off the agenda as well. This meeting was made in spite by Ellie Housewrecker because of the potential discussion of her being removed. How about you, Householder? Get a new hobby. John Pesser, community member. As a parent of a current student and a former student, the blame lays with the board and not the superintendent in regards to how students are doing. We have had a very dysfunctional board for some time and knew we had a board president that is being vindictive and wanting the Stephanie Anello fired, when in fact, it should be the board president that should be removed. I would hope and pray that Clyde Lewis, Antonio Hernandez, and Gary Hack do the right thing and not remove Stephanie, but remove Ellie. Stand up to the bully and put the kids first and not your careers. Name not provided, staff. Superintendent Anello has been supportive and an effective leader for our district. The board should recognize that staff appreciate her decisions during an unprecedented time. No discipline, dismissal, or release should be taking place at this time. She deserves more respect from the board. Find a better use of your time than attacking the superintendent. I will now pass the last of the comments back to Director Wisely.
Thank you, Director Beckencourt. Name not provided, staff. Superintendent Anello has been supportive and an effective leader for our district. The board should recognize that staff appreciate her and her decisions during an unprecedented time. No discipline, dismissal, or release should be taking place at this time. She deserves more respect from the board. Find a better use of your time than attacking the superintendent. Arnie Simonson. Trustees, President Elizabeth Householder should be ashamed of herself for calling the special meeting a closed-session item, quote, "public employee, discipline, dismissal, release," end quote, since it is clearly directed at Superintendent Stephanie Anello. Superintendent Anello has the support of the AUSD staff, teachers, and the community. You cannot hold her responsible for the governor shutting down in-house teaching and the district having to acquire hundreds of laptop computers for students to do remote learning. There will be hell to pay if any action is taken tonight for any trustee who supports what Householder is trying to do. Arnie Simonson, master municipal clerk. Tina Briggs. I usually steer away from anything political, but this vote directly affects my personal well-being, my job, and my community. I'm standing up and hope my voice is heard. I am an instructional assistant at Sutter Elementary School. I worked for AUSD for 21 years. In my opinion, Stephanie Anello is by far the best superintendent we have had during my time with AUSD. Unfortunately, there is nothing that can be said to change the position President Householder is taking in regards to the performance of Superintendent Stephanie Anello because President Householder is no longer listening. However, to those of you that are still listening, I will say simply, please do not remove Superintendent Anello. Her strong leadership is what has kept our district afloat the past two years while the ever-changing world swirled around us. She is a leader with a strong moral compass who makes choices based on the human outcome. She listens, cares, and takes action. Please do not make two challenging school years even worse by taking away a proven, stable, and capable leader from the AUSD. We need Stephanie Anello now more than ever. Her leadership is what is best for our community. Respectfully, Tina Briggs. Rachel Mott. It absolutely blows my mind we are again in another paragraph by our school board president Ellie Householder. If you don't do things her way, she just turns on you and tries to get rid of you. You do not seem to have the slightest idea how to bring this district together or how to support the district as a whole. As a school board president, does not protest with megaphones outside of people's houses and scream.
Comment was already read.
Yes, I actually remember reading this comment. Julie Criticser. Stephanie Anello has been an amazing superintendent for AUSD. You, Ellie, are the one who needs to be removed. You are not qualified to help our students. Mark Jordan. Antioch School Board. I absolutely object to any consideration for the removal of Superintendent Stephanie Anello. Ms. Householder is acting unilaterally in a vicious, vindictive manner and is creating a situation of grave potential liability and litigation for the Antioch School District. If you want to see the Antioch School District in court, move forward. Let me be clear, the cost to the district will be in the seven-figure range. This type of open revenge against a long-term, highly productive, well-respected public employee has no defense. Mark Jordan, citizen of Antioch. Karen Rogers. I don't know what Ellie Householder's hidden agenda is, but I do know that her presence on the board has been disruptive to any positive growth for the district. To go after Superintendent Anello is an attempt to draw attention away from her own behavior is deplorable. I was an employee of the district for 35 years. Parentheses, all of it is in school safety, end parentheses. In my experience, Ms. Anello has been professional, knowledgeable, caring, and open. As far as test scores, some years they're up and some years they're down. A lot of it has to do with whether the students and their families find anything of value in standardized testing. I would also caution Ms. Householder on how she presents suspension statistics. Some individuals are suspended multiple times. So saying 14.2% of black students were suspended is not the same as 14.2% of suspensions were black. E, parentheses, e.g., 100 suspensions involving, say, 60 students, end parentheses. Ms. Householder should look at her own behavior. Karen Rogers. Name not provided. Good evening, AUSD Board Trustees. I'm coming to you as a grandparent of four grandchildren in the AUSD. I'm not sure how much confidence I have in the Antioch Unified School District Board at this time. As a person looking on school board meetings regularly, it seems since Ellie Householder has been elected as a trustee, there's been a constant chaos within school board meetings. Maybe she's not ready to be an elected official in what I feel is a very important position overseeing students' education in our community. It seems that she's been consistently unprepared and has not done her homework when it comes to special meetings. She certainly does not know Robert's Rules of Order and does not follow the rules quite often, especially when it comes to her needs. She has posted on social media about the injustices happening within the AUSD school system, but she actually gone... But has she actually gone into any classroom to see what our educators are doing? Does she have any idea what it takes, not only the teachers, but parents, to help educate children? Does she have any idea how much a teacher typically spends of their own money in the classroom to ensure students have what they need to learn? What has she really done to make our district better? All I read and hear from her is how others are failing our students. But what has she really done to contribute to improve the welfare of the students besides talk? Beverly Knight. I 100% support Superintendent Anello. If this school board president and any other trustees that support her really cared about our students, they would put a stop to this constant chaos. All school superintendents are trying to do to get their students up to speed after a year Zoom school. Our superintendent has to be distracted from what is really important to our students by a school board president with her own personal agenda. Can we please, for the sake of our students and hard-working teachers, principals, and staff, stop the chaos and focus on the needs of our students? The constant turmoil serves no one. Sincerely, Beverly Knight. Mary Ledford. As a school employee of AUSD, I support our superintendent 100%. She is hardworking and is always there for staff and especially students. Ellie Householder is the one that needs to go. She has created a hostile environment and clearly knows nothing about the inner workings of our schools. Laura Young. Another shameful attempt by Householder to remove a superintendent who has broad support in the community as well as with students and staff. Superintendent Stephanie Anello is constantly striving to do what is best for the students of AUSD. I'm disgusted by the blatant political power play, end quote, petty politics, end quote, brought forward by Householder. Throughout this pandemic and since the beginning of her leadership, Stephanie has always had safety and education of students, community, and staff first and foremost. Recognized not only internally but county-wide, Stephanie has been willing to listen, develop short- and long-term strategies, and as well as implement policy that positively impact all students and all staff. Ellie, I cannot say the same for you. I 100% support Superintendent Stephanie Anello. Thank you, Laura Young. Name not provided. Good evening. As a parent and a teacher in AUSD, I'm both upset and saddened by the recent actions taken by this school board. Several of you claim you want to do what is best for the students, but your actions would indicate otherwise. All of these petty politics you are playing is wreaking havoc on our district. You're making our district the laughing stock of East County and lowering the morale of your staff. I'm completely flabbergasted by Ellie's recent blog. Ellie seems to think she knows what it takes to turn this district around. She seems to think that anyone who does not agree with her inherently is inherently wrong, but just because she screams the loudest does not mean she is right. How can we create a, quote, "nurturing and supportive environment," end quote, when we are constantly told that we are failing our students and what we are doing isn't good enough? I encourage the members of the board to step foot in our classrooms at all grade levels and see the amazing work that is happening there. I know test scores are how the state rates us, but these scores are only one of the many factors that measure the success of our students. Parentheses, not to mention the tests are inherently biased, end parentheses. Furthermore, the test scores you bring up are outdated, and the students had to take it on a computer with no computer typing skills. I also want to express that teachers and administrators are not the only ones responsible for the success of our students. We cannot do it without the support of parents. Instead of playing petty politics, I implore the board members to look at what we actually need to be more successful in our schools. What professional development opportunities would be offered to help refine best practices in the classroom? I think the board also needs to take a hard look at the programs they approve and see if they are actually used to fidelity and if they are aligned with best practices. Lastly, I want to commend the superintendent on the success of the Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy. To me, this shows that she knows how to respond to the needs of our community and take action that makes a positive impact for our students. Please put your differences aside and work collaboratively with the best interests of our students and the AUSD community as a whole in mind. Gina Lingenfelter. Ellie Householder, you say that you care about students and teachers. I don't believe it for a second. You are narcissistic, professional pot-stirrer, looking for ways to divide our school community. The teachers and staff of AUSD support Stephanie Anello. She is compassionate and qualified educator with years of hands-on experience. You should apologize to your fellow board members for embarrassing them. You should apologize to our parents and students for making this board district look like an unprofessional circus. And while you're at it, why don't you draft up a letter of resignation? You are not qualified to lead this board. Gina Lingenfelter. AUSD teacher, 19 years. Erin Fleming. Board members, the action in front of you tonight is ridiculous, so please vote no. I can't believe another emergency meeting has been called now to dismiss the superintendent based on test results that are three years old. I truly feel this is a retaliatory measure taken by Ms. Householder since community, staff, and parents do not support Ellie's inappropriate, haphazard leadership style. Please support our superintendent Stephanie Anello, who is the true leader and backbone of AUSD. Erin Fleming, staff and grandparent of two AUSD students. Willie Mims. To the board and members of the community, my name is Willie Mims. I'm the education chair of the East County NAACP. I come to you tonight with just a few words, nothing more, nothing less. Sometimes a change in leadership represents a basic requirement before this district can move towards addressing any of its systematic problems, and you have plenty of them. The current leadership, however, has been an ultimate failure in seriously addressing these problems. One need only to look at the students with the lowest 2018-2019 California Assessment Test Course, the students with the highest suspension rate, and those with the highest suspensions. And that's not the only thing. An examination of the district's discriminatory hiring practice would reveal that something is seriously wrong, especially when looking at the superintendent's cabinet, where you will not find one person. And also, when examines the district's faculty, one will discover that the majority of them do not in any way reflect the diversity of the students sitting in front of them. A change is indeed needed because the current administration does not see any of these issues problematic areas. Therefore, the East County NAACP believes that a change is needed. Willie Mims, MA Education Chair. Name not provided. Good evening. Thank you for allowing my voice to be heard. As not only a member of the AUSD Union, but also a product of the Antioch School System, I can confidently say that board president is totally out of line and abusing her power. This calling for the termination of Ms. Anello is downright disgusting. As a person of color, it is offensive and upsetting that a board member uses my race as a political soapbox and attempting to publicly shame not only APD, but STM, site safety as a whole. The board president has done nothing to improve student performance regardless of race, yet continued to use stats from three years ago to rally her supporters. Our superintendent hasn't been given any goals or been evaluated, so how can you attempt to move to terminate her? Also, when is it okay for a board member to post a video of a minor on TikTok without permission? I strongly feel that if the superintendent is let go, then we need to relieve all board members of their duty, find board members that care for the kids, and not use them as a political stepping stone. Sincerely, a person that actually cares. Name not provided. I'm writing in support of Superintendent Anello and an absolute disgust of little Miss Trump's blatant and unchecked abuse of power. Ever since she was elected to the school board, she has done nothing but cause discord. She is using her political office to advance her personal agenda with no regard to the damage she is causing to the citizens who elected her. In her personal vendetta against Superintendent Anello, she is now seeking to remove the person who has guided AUSD through the COVID-19 pandemic with overwhelming support from families, students, and staff. Why? Is it out of jealousy that Anello has the support of the district and the community? Is she that petty that she needs to feel the power of being able to remove someone who is respected by the community? Ellie, if you want support and respect, you need to earn those. Childish power moves like the one you are trying to pull will not earn you either, except in cases of people like your arsonist buddy who got herself arrested again last week. All you are is a petulant child throwing a temper tantrum. Maybe for your next election campaign, you should have red hats made with the slogan, quote, "Make Antioch Great Again," end quote. Then you will find out how much, like your orange buffoon role model, that divisiveness and discord will not win you any favors. Shame on you. Velma Wilson. I find it utterly amazing that Ellie is portraying that she is attempting to remove Stephanie Anello for the best interest of the students. Ellie, you do not care about the students because if you did, you would stop trying to destroy AUSD. You are a disgust and just makes me sick. Leave Stephanie alone. I am Velma Wilson. That's the end of public comment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wisely and Ms. Beckencourt, for that. That was a monumental task. Do we want to just stretch our legs for another like five minutes? I know I'm getting a little bit restless. If not, we could just go right into closed session. Okay, I see Antonio is nodding his head. Do one more head nod on a five-minute break. If not, we don't have to. We can go right into closed session. Okay, let's take a five-minute break then. It is 9:20, so we'll come back at 9:25, and then we'll reconvene. I'll reestablish quorum, and then we'll break out into our closed session.
Come back everybody, it is 9:33 PM. And before we break to go into closed session, if Ms. Cavalero could reestablish our quorum for us?
Yes, President Householder?
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis? Trustee Hack?
I'm still here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you Ms. Cavalero. And so we have one item for our closed session, which is public employee discipline dismissal release.
Chair, I have a question.
One moment, Trustee Rocha. So we have our public employee discipline dismissal release. We're going to break out into our closed session. And then when we come back, we'll be live again. And if there's anything to report from that closed session, and then that's it for our agenda tonight. I'll mention the meetings and then we'll adjourn. Trustee Rocha, you had a question?
Okay. Is Mr. Dr. Lewis going to be in attendance?
Let's break out into closed session now.
No, I'm just asking you the question. Do you know if he's going to be in attendance?
I don't know.
Okay, in that case, I move to adjourn this meeting because of the seriousness.
All right.
Trustee Rocha, you muted yourself.
So let's break out into closed session. And then we'll have this discussion in closed session because this is about a... Let's just go in a closed session. And then you'll have the floor again, Rocha, Trustee Rocha. So if Joe could...
All right, we're ready, rockin' and rollin'.
Go ahead.
Hello everybody, so it is 10:30 PM, we are getting back from our closed session, so first up we just need to reestablish our quorum, so if Ms. Cavalero is here and she could do that for us?
Yes, President Householder?
Here.
Vice President Lewis? Trustee Hack?
I'm still here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you Ms. Cavalero, and I don't know if I said it, but it's 10:30 PM, and so report from closed session, no action was taken, future meetings, we have one tomorrow, the 22nd, and then our next one is October 27th, and with that I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting at 10:31.
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez, Ms. Cavalero, could you call that roll for us?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Oh yeah.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yep.
Vice President Lewis is not here, President Householder?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:31 PM passes 4 to 0, with Vice President Lewis absent.
Thank you Ms. Cavalero, I'll see everybody tomorrow.
Alright.